All right, we're gonna call the order the Tuesday, May twenty third, two thousand and twenty three work session. And we begin with a FERC update and a FERC request for Jeffrey not to speak.
I brought Helen from Building Hope to sit next to me because she's very calming.
Oh, okay. Helen is here from Building Hope.
There you go.
All right, yeah, I'm here to give a FERC update and then we have a request for the Soul Center as well. So I wanted to just kind of let you guys know what is going on at FERC these days. We are still seeing upwards of two to three hundred families every day that were open at the food market. So we were hoping that those numbers would go down and they haven't thus far. This year, we've been spending about six thousand dollars a week on food, but May it's closer to eleven thousand dollars a week. And so just really trying to keep up with that demand and really feeling the pressures of the need in the community. So we're doing the best that we can with our with our limited staff. I also wanted to give you guys a reminder that roughly we can turn twenty dollars into two hundred dollars worth of food. So while this is bad news that we're seeing such a high rate of people coming in, we really can leverage that money in a way that we haven't been able to. Traditionally, finding money for food has been really difficult for us. And so the relationships that we built and the way that we're able to purchase food is really been really exciting. So while we're spending six to eleven thousand dollars a week on food, it really does go a lot further. So there is some good news attached to that.
How do you do that? How do you turn?
Magic, magic. No. Um, we have, we have relationships with Food Bank of the Rockies. And then we also have relationships with local Colorado farmers that we formed during COVID. We were able to receive grants for seeds.
You don't go to city market.
Whoa, that went away. We help them plant and then they sell it back to us at a reduced rate. Yeah, so it's pretty exciting. And that that's only eligible for for food markets or in food pantries throughout the. Um, I also wanted to give some updates on our rental program. We're still experiencing still really high need. I don't know if you guys have heard, but there is a housing crisis going on in this community and a lot of people are in need. So people are coming to us. And we used to be able to help somebody and kind of change the trajectory of their situation with about a thousand dollars. And now rent, you know, is thirty two hundred dollars. And so we're really just not able to keep up with the demand in the way that we were in the past. The rent is higher and then the need is higher. And so last year, we quietly took twenty nine families and did a program where we were able to give them a stipend every month and really work with them in a very case management based way to understand what the the problems were that they were facing and get them to where they need to be in order, like throughout the whole year. So they left the program feeling like they understood their budget. They had employment opportunities. They had wraparound supports. They anything they were eligible for, they were plugged into. So it was a really exciting thing. And those twenty nine families that stopped in December and all twenty nine of those families are still here in Summit County. They're still in the workforce. Their kids are still in our schools. And so moving into next year, we're really going to try that on a larger scale and really help families truly stay here and take six months to a year to really work with them and ensure that those families that are committed to being here and have ties to this community have that possibility to stay here. We also, of course, have emergencies that come up and it really is just a one time need. And those are the things that we can't keep up with. Thirty two hundred dollars for an average rent of for a family is pretty expensive. And so what we've decided to do is invite the community to come in and understand what the community is actually facing. So we've asked all kinds of entities just to come in to meet with us and really discuss what this looks like and what we want to do as a community to support these folks. We've asked everybody to come in and I think at a really manageable level of ten thousand dollars. That's so we can have the face faith based communities, other smaller nonprofits that might want to work with us and then bigger entities such as town governments and even the county. What do you think will decide is what we want that pot to be and how we want to as a community and as a group be able to meet those needs? So I'm pretty excited about that program and just the aspect of really coming at it with a community lens rather than just a FERC lens because we just can't keep up. So those are our two big things that have changed since the last time I presented here. Do you want to give some building, a couple of building hope updates?
And I would say that I was just here talking with you guys, so there's not too much more to update past that. Brienne's notes from from me reflect that we've just had higher rates of suicide, higher rates of youth depression. All of the the scholarship information that I discussed with you guys last month are still accurate to what they they are today, continuing to grow and continuing to expand as far as the need goes. And we're continuing to see that from the youth as well as in the age group of twenty to forty is our primary focus.
Awesome. So that brings us into the Soul Center. What we are still looking to do is build this building where we can work together and make sure that the residents of Summit County can walk in the door and access both of our programs or all of our programs and really be connected to what and who they need to be connected to. We are really excited because we did get the the final numbers and we got the updated budget. And we it did have a twenty percent increase overall. The project, the cost of the project is now thirteen point four million dollars. Last time I came here, it was eleven point eight. This reflects a couple of different things that have happened. When we first made our budget, we were unaware of of the land stabilization that would need to happen in order for us to build. If you remember, we kind of turned our building because folks here reminded us that we really need to build it with a loading dock and make sure that there was good flow. And so we're really grateful for the suggestions. But it did that turn did make us have to increase our budget a bit to to fill in that and inject that. We have some sustainability efforts that came in a little bit higher. We definitely want to make sure that the building is built with our shared values of of being really environmentally conscious. It's really important to us. It's obviously really important to you. So we are still doing that. We added about three thousand feet in the basement so that we could pull anything possible down so that we could really use any space, any office space for really that collaboration. Like if we want to invite the care clinic in to do dental cleanings, we need the space. And so just really looked at that in a way to maximize the space as much as as possible. And we have some really great people that are that are working on that. And so I think that that's going to be really great. And then the building is now, it needs steel structure. So that's there is a pretty big cost associated with that. And we have to go outside of the community for for a lot of these things. And so that is kind of where that increase came from. And, you know, we want to do all of these things because it is it is your building. We're just want to be good stewards of that building. And so that's where we are. To date, we are over eighty percent of the way to our fundraising goal. So there is definitely some good news. That includes three point four million dollars in in kind donations and that's still growing. It's so we have approximately two point four million to raise. We did yesterday, we were really excited, have about one point three million dollars in grant requests out. But unfortunately, we did hear from Dola yesterday that they were not going to fund our project and the six hundred thousand dollars did not come through. And so sad to report that that doesn't mean that they won't be hearing from us. We hope to work with them. They do want to infuse some money into this community, but unfortunately, this project just wasn't chosen. Really, how we look for funding is we look at the federal money that and especially the federal money that comes down to the state of the car, state of Colorado to really make sure that we're looking for other sources. And then we come back to the community and say, here is what we need. And so that's essentially why I'm here today. I I am asking you for for what we need to move this project along, which is seven hundred thousand dollars, which is a big ask, especially given that we have land donated. The reason being is I need to get us to a point where we can move forward with construction and potentially get to the end of it with a small mortgage or no mortgage at all is kind of my goal. That's what the goal was of the project all along because we really do want to take those cost savings and put them right back into programming. We think it's really important that the community, everyone in the community gets behind this building. And we have had a lot of support. We have had high level support and we've had the the person in the food market who has handed me twenty one, one dollar bills and set. And because she's in there and she watches how ineffective our current building is for giving out food and just has been really excited. She's on our food equity committee, so she understands a little bit more than just the average consumer of our our food market. And so really excited to see those small donations too, because it shows us that this is for our clients. It's our client's building. And I think that that's just as important. But we need to, we need to get to where we need to be. So that's, that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes.
Carol.
Thank you both so much for everything you do. I mean, your talks are essential to the viability of our community. Speaking about the built building, I feel like every update you've come, we've been blown away by you meeting your fundraising goals. So I guess that is one of my core questions. Why at this time are you all asking for this much money from the town when you've been so successful and you haven't even broke ground yet?
That's a good question. We, we have not broke ground yet and we have had a lot of community support. We were pretty close to the finish line. We knew it was going to be hard, hard finish. But with this increase, this does put us back. Two point four million dollars is a large amount of money to raise. And I am definitely putting all of my effort and will not stop putting all of my effort into raising this money. But essentially, I want to show that the need of the community also needs this attention. Two of the most hardest things to fundraise for right now is capital and food. And understanding that I can leverage food dollars so far, I do have a really hard time and I'm having a really hard time getting to the threshold that we need to be able to to understand that we have enough money to get through this build. We need money to get us all the way from construction to the end of the project. That's really important. And this would get us closer to that goal.
Brienne.
Can I just add to that, Carol? Because I've been, Shannon and I both talked with either, you know, Peter Joyce or Tim Casey throughout stages of this. And we've had conversations recently, especially about the the soil issue. That and and we know that that came up early on when we got relocated in that area that was filled in. And at the time, we were concerned that that could be anywhere from a quarter million to a million dollar increase in the cost. And then as they explored it further and then they came up with this, these peers, these peers that they're going to set in the ground and got the price of three hundred and something thousand dollars, whatever it is for those. You know, I had, there was conversation and I had told Pete at some time, you know, that door might be open for the town to assist in some of those additional costs. And we just, it was kind of a timing issue of when do we go back? When do we talk? And we, you know, we, knowing that, you know, this thing still got a ways to go to the finish line. You know, we just thought it was important. Maybe now we said, let's come back in front of the council, have an update. And I also like the fact that this housing thing, this emergency housing fund that I think we all support is coming around. So I thought the timing of that was good for this also.
Was it really important that we, the planning required they move the building to the to the pond?
Well, it didn't necessarily move it onto the pond. It moved it a little, it moved it because we, we had to get it away from that intersection some in order to accommodate the semi being able to maneuver in there and get in plus, you know, the orientation of the building was a bit concerning for community development from the original iteration that we saw. That's what ended up pushing it a little farther into that area. I'm not sure that even where it was originally at might not have been perfect soil either. It certainly didn't help at any when we ended up pushing it a little farther into that. A part of that building now is in the area that was once occupied by that pond. And when we filled it, it wasn't, it wasn't filled with the type of material that you would compact and blah, 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 right? In order to build on it, that would have been a whole different right, a set of issues had we done that too. So.
In like when, when the was it COMDA or Planning, you know, kind of made that request? I mean, were we aware that it was could be three hundred and fifty K to added costs?
Not at that time, no. I don't recall that at the time.
And my, on the same thing about swampland, are we sure that this is going to work?
Oh, I'm pretty sure. I I mean, Pete's been building homes forever. He feels pretty comfortable with this.
I think everybody feels comfortable with this solution. There was a wide range of solutions that we were offered up to the cost of a million dollars. This seemed to satisfy everyone and the engineers.
I think that building will be there forever, especially with the steel structure and and then setting on these piers that are in the ground and everything.
I think some of this fruit, Mike.
Can you talk to us about the timing piece and the needing cash? Because I felt like that kind of brought it all together for me.
Yeah. So if if we, because of the increase in our in our need, if we don't raise money right now in July of two thousand and twenty four, we will need to have a bridge loan in place, a construction loan to finish the project. Essentially, that is just going to cost us more money. And so we're really trying to look at the financial health of FERC and really trying to make sure that we can do the mission work that we are also supposed to be doing at this time. If I I do have some some numbers, we'll have to borrow about because we have this coming in in phases. We've allowed everybody to give over three years. We have pledges too that we have to account for. Not all this money is in our hands that we have raised, but it's going to come in. So we would have to borrow because of the way pledges are coming in, three million dollars to finish the project and for that construction financing. And that line of credit would then convert to a thirty year permanent mortgage. But basically, that would be, that would convert to a two point six million dollar mortgage. And that's going to be an extra one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in interest. And it's going to cost us a two hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year to have that building. And so we're really just trying to figure that out. The the thing that makes this also really hard is that construction loan is going to be very difficult, if not impossible to get because we'll be in mid construction, we'll be in the middle of the project. And so and then our, our, the our arrangement with you guys makes it just a little bit unique. And so that is also a worry that I would like to get into place and understand if that is something we need to worry about now.
Is it is a land lease and the default, right? If FERC goes away, no longer provides those services, the building converts to us.
Right.
It's not a great for the bank to look at that because they're not guaranteed, right? What they would want. So it's difficult.
Right. Because there ever been.
I'm sorry. The other thing we had talked about was whether we could guarantee that in the form of a loan via the town. And that, I mean, we did something similar when we did the Nordic with Jean Dayton up there, that building. So, I mean, it can be done. It's just gets complicated for the town too, to enter into those agreements. So. But I also said, you know, let's cross that bridge when we get to it, right? Because we don't know what's going to happen a year from now or how much more success they're going to have in their fundraising, et cetera. So I didn't really feel like we needed to commit to those things right now.
That was, that was actually my question was whether we have entered into being the the bank. And if that would be kind of a suitable place for us to land here is to have that backstop, knowing that instead of providing that as a, as a gift or a grant, but being a backstop going, hey, you know, you're eighty percent of the way there and we haven't even gone, you haven't even started going vertical yet. I imagine the the last twenty percent is a heck of a lot easier than the first eighty. And so if we're there as a backstop on a loan.
It's absolutely the other way around. I mean, you would think that, but it's absolutely, absolutely opposite. It's always that last part and anybody that's participated on our capital, I think, can agree. It is really difficult because you've tapped into all of those players. And so you're really, that's where I was very excited two weeks ago, a long, long time ago, when we were closer to goal before we got these final numbers. But no, I think unfortunately, Jay, that isn't the way. It's exactly opposite.
And what do you have left out in grant proposals?
We have, we have six hundred to, excuse me, five hundred to congressional. We were pretty far in that process. We hope to get that. And then we have another hundred thousand with El Pomer.
Other questions?
Can I ask a question about the rental part?
Sure.
So are you asking for seven hundred thousand and then how much for the rental?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Who wants to start?
I'll start with the rental part because that's very easy. I think that's a great initiative that what you all are putting together, this stipend program, getting a lot of partners together. And what I think is most interesting is creating this equity group from the community. I think those impacts will have ripple effects to have them together. Moving on to the building or should we just do rental first? Yeah, on the building. When we first saw this grant, I had a hard time with this because I think what is the role of government? And we look at different situations where we look at this food need where that just exploded. That's something your organization can't plan for. Kelly brought it up and we gave money with this huge capital investment. It is a little tougher because that's long term strategic planning from your organizations. But at the end of the day, what especially FERC does for this community is the most basic need. And we look at these soaring food numbers. We look at the stat that one in three community members access your services. This is a community wide program that we need to do everything we can to help. So I don't know what the rest of us are thinking. I would be supportive of contributing, maybe not the full amount, but at least the three fifty compact grouting. I think that's a clear nexus where it's our land. Let's complete that gift.
Okay.
First off, I wanted to tell you how much I appreciate all your time and how much effort has gone into this and the fundraising while trying to maintain operations. And I I wish for you that you have, continue to have support behind you and whether that is in the form of town or your board or, you know, the people that work with you. I just, I appreciate everything that you've put into this. It's so obvious, the heart and soul that goes into where you are. I do, I have a hard time with the number that was put out there. And I understand that, you know, you said you were asked to put out what you need and so that's what you asked for. I too am comfortable with that three fifty number. Because I do think that there is that you will be a fully funded at CEO. I just, I don't have a doubt with this community and with continued efforts. I would, I would even offer if staff is okay with it to to give you all some of Aubrey's time to help you with the the grant writing process. So you're not up to one in the morning after a full day's work writing these grants. Just to kind of take advantage of all the assets that are at your disposal. I do see that pod restitution, the soil being the kind of the big line item that I feel that it would be our place to to support. And then also taking a look at whether a loan backstop would be something that would be advantageous as we get fully further down the road come July next year.
Thank you.
Jeffrey. Oh, I'll jump on the love train for FERC. A little disappointed I don't get twenty dollars groceries for, you know, buyback. Anyway, yeah, I, I think we could do something with, I mean, I, I don't, I think the seven hundred is a little bit of a big ask right now. I think come back down the road if it's in a crisis situation. But I can see you can in for the three fifty for the for the building on the wetlands and the hundred and fifty share electric transformer. So that would be five hundred K. And then I'm in for the ten K for housing. That's that's my take.
I come at it a little bit differently. I think that, you know, the people side of this community is foundational. I think particularly the underserved and and, you know, similar to what Carol was saying, kind of shocked that, you know, a third of the folks in our community are using the services. And I love the work you do. I think it's, I'd love to see you spend less time fundraising and and time working on that programming because it does keep people in the community and it is hard to raise money. So I'm all in at the, at the, and I have my glasses on. So is that seven fifty or is that the seven hundred? So.
Seven hundred.
Yeah.
More than you. Fifty, right?
It says nine seventy five.
I'm, I'm in at the seven hundred. I I think the ten's actually a little light on the rental, but I I want you guys working on programming and not running around fundraising. So I'm in at seven hundred. Dick?
Yeah, I very, very much value and appreciate the work both of you guys do. I think we can't forget Building Hope and their work. I mean, it's, it's just foundational is a good word. We, we talked, you know, in our retreat about how we can differentiate ourselves for for our community members. And this, this is foundation right here. I mean, this facility allows you guys to do your work without fundraising all the time. There's so much programming that is needed in these areas in our community to have you, you know, spending a tremendous amount of time fundraising. And to to finish this, this project, we have an opportunity to do it without a mortgage. God, wouldn't that be a real win for the community where you guys can focus on your programming and not fundraising? So there's a sweet spot somewhere, you know, I, I want to give other members of the community an opportunity to participate as well. So I, I, I think it's five hundred minimum, maybe somewhere between that and seven hundred. But I'm, I'm very supportive at that on the higher side.
Kelly.
Yeah, I think everything's been said. Thank you both for all the work you do. I absolutely agree with the ten thousand. And I don't know if you need like an annual guarantee so that, because I think just trying to look at how to make a program that's really going to help the community long term is just fantastic that you're, you know, trying to project. And there's so many things, but if it helps you for planning, I mean, I think that we would be happy to say we'll give that annually. I'll speak for everyone. And then and with the, with the other ask, I think the thing that's like, we can't, we can't really forget about is that if, if they do have a mortgage and even if we're saying we're giving this money for programming, they're just moving money around in the background to do this. So like, it really does make sense to set them up to not have a mortgage. Having said that, I do think there are a lot of players in this community that I hope you're reaching out to. I know we talked about Vale Resorts, the other municipalities, just big players who, you know, it is about the people, but the municipalities, town abreast shouldn't be the only people paying attention to the people. So hopefully, I'd like to do five hundred thousand with the understanding that if we need to have enough. I'd like to do five hundred thousand with the understanding that if we need to have another discussion, I'm, I'm very open to that. And then I loved Jay's point about, I don't know if there's anything we can do to help with grant writing, but I do know that that's a huge, huge effort. And if there's some way that we could help that facilitate that from the town's perspective, I'd really, really love to, but I know that she's busy and doing lots of great things for us in the town too. So five hundred thousand.
All right.
Ten thousand.
Look, I think we should be in for the grounding, the compact grounding. And I think that uh, the shared electrical transformer should be us too. So that's how I get to five hundred. I'd like to see you go to the other towns and tell them that we gave the five hundred and there's two hundred remaining on this ask that I would personally appreciate it if Frisco Silverthorne or Dillon would fill that gap of that two hundred thousand or the county. Or, you know, and I think, I think as a right, it's, this is not just a Breckenridge project. It might be here and I, I am hap- happy as the Town of Breck to carry the maju- a lot of the load. I wouldn't even say the majority, but a lot of the load for some of these, these asks. I'd, I'd love you to go back to them now and say, look, this is what, you know, they stepped up, time for you to step up. So so we have.
Could I do one more comment? I, I'm also in on the ten thousand for the, I didn't say that. And I like Kelly's idea of doing it in perpetuity. I'd also, as they go to the other communities, I'd love for all of us up here to commit to giving to this project, whether it's ten bucks or ten thousand, but I would like, and I'll start, you know, I have given and, and may give again, but um, I'd like to see all of us so that you can say, well, town council also stepped up. And at Brecken is, is a hundred percent in. So I don't know what you guys think about that.
I think that's a great idea. And just to jump in with one more long-term discussion, I think we should really rally the whole community, talking to Breeanne, understanding, I mean, how critical their mission is and how outside of this capital project, like we need to make sure FERC's programs are sustainable, can grow to meet needs. And I don't know what that looks like, if it's mayors and managers rallying their troops, but really having this community-wide conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have
three at five.
Two at three fifty, one at seven and one at five to seven. You good with five?
I can work with five. I, I like Kelly's comment at five, you know, and we're, we're always here.
You're staying at seven?
Yep.
Here at five? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thanks, everybody.
And thank you to the board in the
The only reason you got is because Peter wasn't here.
Didn't know that. Thanks again. Uh, okay, planning commission decisions. Do we have anything for the May sixteenth meeting? It's actually sort of us, the Soul Center in Stillson. So who's going to call something? All right. Any questions? All right. Uh, that stands as presented. We start with legislative review and the Father Dyer Food Pantry Trailer Development Agreement. And this is on for second reading this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, the development agreement uh, will allow a temporary trailer to provide food pantry services at Father Dyer while they're under construction with their addition. Um, there's no changes from the first reading.
Thank you, Mark. Questions? All right. Everybody good for a second reading?
This is a feel-good meeting.
Uh, waterline easement dedication. Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
They all.
Wait till the fire department gets.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, James.
Mayor and Town Council, um, the ordinance before you this evening is a second reading of an ordinance that was passed on first reading for authorizing the granting of a utility easement uh, to certain High Point property owners. And no changes from first reading?
Questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Uh, we have concealed carry and open carry in town buildings for first reading.
Mayor, Mayor Council, um, so I can speak to some of this and then I think staff will want to jump in on uh, some of the changes. As you um, will recall, we had a work session on um, this proposal. And we were directed by council to take it back and draft for first reading. Some provisions around the, the main substantive change has to do with concealed carry. There was a change in state law that gave local jurisdictions more authority over firearms. And so this, this is separated into two bills, just because it made it easier for drafting purposes and I think readability. But the main substantive change was to prohibit concealed carry in certain um, public buildings. And then we um, took that same approach to clean up what was already existing in the code for open carrying of firearms. Uh, there was um, one additional substantive change to the existing code and that was to take out some spaces. Um, and I don't know if Scott or Shannon, you want to speak to the rationale behind those? Um, okay.
Yeah, sure. So when we were looking at the concealed carry and where that should and shouldn't be, we realized that in the open carry, we had some prohibited areas that just didn't make sense. Um, and as an example, you could open carry on the sidewalk, but if you stepped into Blue River Plaza, then you were doing something illegal. Or if you made your way over to the Riverwalk pathway, that was illegal. And so we took out just a few of those open areas or open spaces that didn't make sense, would be difficult to sign and enforce. So that's the, the change in the open carry piece.
Questions?
I wouldn't uh, is it possible to ask Chief to come down for a couple of questions?
Sure. He doesn't look too psyched about it.
It's hard to get even excited.
Hello, Chief.
Hello.
Thank you for coming down. I, I was just curious, in this ordinance, do you feel like it is enforceable to have a concealed carry ban on some of these buildings?
No, um, enforcing something like this is a challenge. The closest analogy I could give is it's like regulating underwear color. We're never going to see it. And um, yeah, unless somebody. That's next.
It's like a Jeffrey comment.
He is committing another violation of some kind. We will, in all likelihood, not know that somebody is concealed carrying um, in any of our buildings.
Would, do you think this ordinance makes us safer in, in these buildings that we're talking about?
I do not.
And would, if this ordinance was to pass, what would be the protocol for staff? Let's say whether it's the ice rink or the rec center. They, someone's reaching for something, they see that something of the shape or whatever. How would they go about? What would, what would be protocol?
So if somebody were to be observed carrying a weapon in one of these buildings, um, we would respond. Just because somebody is carrying a gun in one of these buildings doesn't necessarily mean it's a violation. For example, the way it's written, I can walk into these buildings in plain clothes. Any of my staff, any other law enforcement officer. So we would just approach the person and see if it was a violation of some kind. And if it was, then they would be held accountable in all likelihood with the written summons.
And when you say we, that, would that be town staff, like the front desk clerk or would?
No, it would be the police department. Uh, it would be the expectation. We haven't talked this part through, but it would be the expectation that if anybody that is staffing any of these buildings from the town were to see something that they do not engage, they just call us.
I, uh, Chief, I've been thinking about this. Okay, like this scenario, someone with a concealed carry card, you know, a, 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 someone that follows the rules, coming up for the front range. I, I worry that, you know, they're coming in, they say, they say the rec center. And they go to the rec center, which has high traffic and, and, you know, people can see what's going on. They go, oh, shoot, I can't, I can't carry in here. So they go back to their car and they put it in a place and put it in their car, which isn't observed. You know what I mean? And, and so if someone wanted, if someone wanted to, to get a, steal a gun, it seems to be a lot easier to just smash and grab in an automobile than in a rec center where it's in a locker and there's people around. And it just would be a little bit, would be more obvious. Am, am I out of line on that or is that?
No, I, I see the logic of what you're saying and it's um, it's not, I wouldn't say it's quite that clean because I mean, there are thefts out of the lockers at the rec center. It's rare.
Yeah.
Thefts out of the parking lot are rare as well. But, you know, I mean, a, a weapon could be stolen from either location. Um, but if it's on somebody, you know, I would say it's not, uh, that's not a likely steal.
If you're leaving, if you're leaving your weapon unattended somewhere.
Yep.
I would rather have it locked in their trunk.
Yeah.
Than in a locker.
You what?
My kids are alone in the locker room.
Cause they're taking it off of their person and, and putting it in a locker.
Yeah.
In a locker room. I, I mean, that's when you look at all these, I think that, I've been, I don't know why anybody needs to take a gun into the rec center, but um, they uh, you know, they should be taking it. I, I would hope that most people, if they're going to work out, they have a concealed carry that they are taking it off and leaving it in a trunk or somewhere safe within their car and not taking it and putting it in an unattended locker room. Yeah.
Yeah. You know, what my, my thought, I guess I was concerned about visibility is that like someone, you know, you see, you say someone's scoping out the, the rec center and they, they see someone going, they see the concealed carry sign. Oh, shoot, they go back to the car. That's kind of like a red flag today. I get a piece. Um, you know, you're sticking to my trunk, but I, um, I think I'm okay with this. I, I I guess you get it, we have, you have to err on the side of caution, but I do think it like, I agree. I think it's unenforceable and I think sometimes it could put our staff in a, in an awkward situation.
I'm not sure if this is a question for Kirsten or you, but um, you said that off-duty police officers would, would be exempt from this. What about um, off-duty sheriffs, for example, um, or military? Like, how far does that go? Does that allow?
It doesn't go to military, but it does, uh, so in two thousand four, um, and then there was an update in two thousand ten, there's the Law Enforcement Officer Safety Act. That allows for any sworn police officer in the nation to concealed carry in any state, regardless of the rules of that state. And without, although the town does have the authority to prohibit that, the absence of speaking to it makes it permissive. Did I say that right? Lawyer speak?
Yeah, I don't have any.
Yeah, we didn't call it out as something in there that would be, I mean, we allow, if they're considered law enforcement, we don't recognize just our law enforcement, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And what does the county and Frisco do currently?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
I did not get the, they were asking about at the mayor manager, they were kind of interested what we're doing on this, but cautiously interested. I think especially at the other end of the county, a little bit, because they got some pushback over there. Yeah. So.
Other questions? Hey, how's everybody feel about this first reading? Okay. Thanks, Chief. You bet. Uh, we have the twenty twenty-three National Electric Code Adoption for First Reading. Looks like it's you, Trucks.
They leave you hanging on this one?
It's all right. This one's not that hard. Any questions? Actually, the building inspector came and talked to us about this last week. So everybody feel good about this? There you go. Thank you. Uh, end of the public health emergency.
Yeah, we're just going to ask that you approve a resolution that will officially end the public health emergency. This is in line, I think, was it May eleventh?
The national.
Will that change anything that seems routine today that will actually expire? I keep, I'm thinking about like when tents weren't allowed behind restaurants anymore. Is there anything that become, has become routine that?
We don't think so. No, we talked about it this morning and uh, most of that stuff, we put an end to uh, those things a while back anyway. So, yeah.
All good? All right? Okay, public project update.
A little slow. I thought you were sleeping over there.
I would never call you slow. He's scared of you.
New Mayor and Council. We don't have too much more to discuss other than the memo. Wanted to let you know that North Main should be open tomorrow morning, first thing. They should complete paving today, want to let it rest overnight and then open it up first thing. Um, we do have one point for discussion and that's the closure of the flume trail to complete that drainage project. Chris has been communicating with the contractor on schedule. And right now we would be looking at doing that proposed one week closure, the last week of June. So we're looking for feedback from council if a one week closure is acceptable.
And it said five days, right?
Yeah, one working, like Monday through Friday week.
Yeah, I thought that was.
Think we have much of a choice, do we?
I mean, it just needs to be done.
Their stuff will have melted out by then. Kind of stuff starting to open up already. So I don't think that's a huge deal. As long as we just make sure it's signed properly and you know, at any, any sort of intersection area that we sign it so that people aren't riding down and getting to the closure part and turning around and getting mad.
We'll do our best to get all that information out.
A lot of the, a fair amount of use of the flume trail are people that live right adjacent to the flume trail. So it'd have to kind of reach out for them. Or I mean, is it a problem if they, you know, they, they get on the flume trail, walk quarter mile one way or the other, if there's no, you know, so.
Yeah, it's just the small area where, where we need to do some covert work and cross the trail that is the closure.
We haven't looked um, getting MTV project to do anything, to be able to manipulate that app at all to uh, to show closures. We talked about it last summer for something.
Scott?
For long-term closures, yes. For short-term, no.
So we'll go for it? Perfect.
Let's make sure we do some stuff on our website. Even if we can hit the Free Ride app.
We'll work with all.
Some more, more info we can get out. The less complaints we'll get.
We can hope anyway. Um, do you have questions on any of the other projects going on or anything that came out of the retreat?
When's that, when's the dam going to be finished?
For twenty twenty-three.
When?
November.
Of this November.
This November.
Meaning that now, once they drain the water, then we can take the copper dam apart. So.
Be super excited to be done with this one. I know James likes the stress of the runoff, but.
Disaster nearly averted.
That would have been a real kerfuffle if it uh. More than a kerfuffle. Any other questions on public projects? All right, mobility?
Thank you.
Thank you.
James is did share with you, I don't know if you had a chance to open it, some early numbers on the uh, the electric bike use over the four days.
I'm pretty shocked.
And we've had it two hundred and sixty-six. Is that right?
Yeah. Two hundred and more costles.
Look to see where they're, they're, they're coming from too and where they're initiating that. So that's some good data in there.
Do you have any idea, like, can we track how many unique users are taking advantage of it? Is it a couple of people going back and forth a bunch or?
We have to be careful because uh, drop has to separate out the personally identifiable information for any data they give us. But we could probably find out like number of app downloads total and get that number for you.
Cool.
Hey, how do they change the batteries? Do they go and re, like a mobile charger? Or do they go to, you know, kind of go around the town and, and uh, put new batteries?
That, yeah, they're charged back at their warehouse and then they, um, when they're going out rebalancing bikes, they also have the fully charged batteries that they're swapping out.
They do that at night? Your little elves that you're in the night. They're like cobblers. The keeper.
I don't know. And I, I think they're still figuring out. I don't know, and I, I think they're still figuring out their rebalancing plan and when, when they'll do that and part of that will just. Depend on the ridership that they're seeing and when the best times, when it's most needed to do that.
I biked one down to get here. It was so easy to use and when I was locking up my bike, a couple of people came up to me to ask about it, so. And what I've heard, there's so much interest in the community, so thanks for spearheading that Teddy.
Carol was complaining about the speed. It's not fast enough for, just so you know, not fast enough for.
They're really fast.
That's not what she said. Well, she, she hit a double jump and.
They're not fast enough and they're too fast, so which, which makes them think that they're probably close to where we want to be. Um, and then James just reminded me, we are working on hub signage, so we're gonna have signs at each of the designated hubs that will be getting out probably. By the end of next week. It'll just be a sign at the hub itself, so you know that that is a hub. We do have some of those green racks that are used just as regular bike racks. In other places, but they're not bike share hubs, so um, the signs will help with clarifying where exactly the hubs are and people can dock them.
Put a regular bike at a hub?
We want, want to discourage it because we'd like to save it for the regular bike. Possible, but um, there's nothing stopping you from doing that.
Regular city market one then, because there's not a good one at city market.
There's not one.
So I had to use the e-bike one.
I don't have.
But it was my e-bike. I don't know if that helps.
At the rec center today, there was no room in the bike racks. It was all.
Oh, that's awesome.
E-bikes. So I, I had to bring mine into my locker, but I left my gun outside. And the bike, yeah. Do you e-bike so you could ride a bike in the rec center? Yeah, I'm just curious. I, I e-bike so I could do the spin class, yeah.
One thing on. The first page on the parking uh, has the ten dollar flat rate all day for the South Gondola. I'd become aware that maybe that is inconsistent with some of the other parking in town. And you know, we talked about it two weeks ago and like to council or consider having it be consistent this uh, summer at fifteen. And then if in the planning stages next year, we decide that once we have a baseline that we go down to ten at that point. Then we can kind of take it from there.
And I didn't realize in the past, we've discussed pricing with Bill Resorts and this year because of our discussion last week, we sort of just went rogue. And I feel like that's an important part of the concept to me is to be a partner with them.
I'd like to push next year to get them to be a partner with us.
Yeah, and I think, I think they would, they didn't seem negative about it. They just have budgeting and they've already done a lot of work towards that.
You can say no.
Yeah, I mean, I hear the need to, to play nice, but I, I think it's too much for that spot. It's not gonna get used much.
Carol?
No questions.
Ten or fifteen.
Oh, um, I think we should stay consistent.
About possibly, are we still gonna talk about um, if Matt can figure out how to get some money put back in someone's wallet?
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it would be good. Maybe if we could practice, see if it works and then maybe pitch it to the skier for the winter.
For when people stay.
Yeah, when you stay, you get money back.
Get money back.
That'd be fantastic.
Did you get it in a wallet, not a refund on your card?
Yeah. So that's what they can do.
Right.
Do we know when's the electric car gonna be available for rent? And that's true, that's coming up any day, right?
Uh, by June twenty-eighth. Officially trying to launch it and we're trying to have the vehicles here actually maybe a week, week or so before then.
Teddy, thank you. James, thanks. Uh, sustainability.
I think we're gonna stay up here for that. Um, any questions on sustainability?
Any uh, any report and news so far on those uh, those cups about the attrition rate at the um. Town cleanup? Is it too early to ask this?
I asked Hayden, he said that they were mostly going in the right receptacles and there were, people weren't pitching them in the trash. And they, they mostly felt like it was a success. They're still crunching the numbers, so I didn't have any hard numbers.
So they'll, they'll tell us the, the company. Yeah, our cups told me that their loss is only five percent in all their other venues, which is shocking.
Nice cup though.
No, it's great. I.
You can tell you're not supposed to just chuck it.
Yeah, I think that's really cool if they can make that work, but.
Teddy, do you think that you can follow up? Um, we heard some rumbling about possibly um, pay as you throw. Being complex for property managers and so property managers who have multi, multiple units. In one neighborhood. Just were gonna make everybody pay, they could get whatever size they wanted, but they weren't gonna pass along the savings. So I think that we have like a rules document that goes along with that and I'm just wondering and maybe Kirsten will have to verify that. That would be something appropriate to put in the rules, but it seems like if we're already hearing that, we probably want to go ahead and. Make sure that we can find a way forward, that the savings get passed on the, to the customer.
Yes, we can, we'll look into that for you.
Thanks.
And with that resource package for URO, I know we're all starting to get questions from property managers. Um, there was some mention the other day of the strong futures grant, which those grants, grant amounts go up to like fifty thousand or so a project? Do those apply for getting in compliance with URO? And if so, can we include that as a resource for property managers?
I'll have to find out and get back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just back to Kelly's point. I don't want to just stomp on them because there, there could be some validity. Because they're property managers of vacation rentals. That there are possibly times of the year that they're gonna need a big can no matter what, and what I don't want to do. I don't want a, an owner to just cheap out to the small can and then we end up with a problem. That then gets dumped on the property manager at those times of year when there are forty people in those homes or whatever, so. If you could research it before we do anything, because. That might be, I thought about this quite a bit after we talked about it. It might be the right solution is that. All of their customers get, they get a big can because they're gonna use it at some point. The benefit to us is they're getting recycling, so that's the benefit. I, I want to make sure we're not creating a problem. By thinking about May and the problem comes in December, January, so.
For their neighbors as well.
Correct, so.
And currently it's just kind of a hands-off thing for the property management companies in this situation where we were expecting them to. Figure out what works best for their community um, in terms of allowing their residents to sign up for the can size they want. And passing the savings along accordingly. But um, let me talk to Jesse when she gets back and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Anything else on sustainability? Alright, thanks guys. Uh, housing and childcare.
Conversation for sure.
Right, hi.
I don't believe you had any minutes in your packet, so we probably don't have any questions about the minutes. We did want to touch base with the council on a couple of things that are sort of time sensitive. One is in regard to um, the staples, we're getting very close to. Starting to see a lot of progress out there, but we, and even the lottery and the sales activity picking up. Um, we need to finalize a couple of deal points on the deed restriction. Um, and one of them um, that we wanted input from the council on that came up, a lot of questions came up at the open house. This was one that came up frequently, particularly folks that are looking at a duplex or a single family home. Were wondering if they would be able to um, retain ownership of another property that they might have in the county. You know, our history with this and definitely Wellington and Lincoln Park. Just a point, you are allowed to own other property or similar price sort of product. Um, so that was my recommendation is that we continue with that. Um, for the townhomes, we would not recommending, recommend that you can own other property and acquire one of these townhomes. Those are our lowest priced units and um, and we wanted to be consistent with what we've done at sort of Gibson Heights and Vicks. And Maggie, all those other neighborhoods where you can't own um, other properties if it's a hundred percent-ish unit, so. That's our recommendation is that you can if it's a duplex or a single family and you cannot if it's a townhome.
How's everybody feel about that?
So Laura, you're thinking a hundred percent or less AMI than they cannot?
Well, not necessarily because we do have some townhomes that are one-ten. Um, so I think it's more just the townhomes at one hundred and one-ten cannot own other real estate.
So we're just talking about this specific, we're not gonna, we're not making a decision for future developments or anything like that.
Um, I think this is one thing that we look at at each development depending on the target. Um, this one clearly is primarily missing metal, so it won't be, it wouldn't surprise us if people have been in the community, may have a rental or investment property, so. Um, but you know, we were doing, for example, if block eleven is our next project and that's more first time home buyers. Then yes, it would be a, a concern and we would probably not recommend it.
How much are the uh, triplexes or?
The triplexes range in price from the lowest priced townhome is three seventy-three. The highest priced townhome is five forty, so it's, it's eighty to one-ten.
I'm a little bit torn on not allowing um, another unit because. Like some of the, somebody who owned a studio and now has a family and they're moving into. A little bit bigger of a unit and they can, they're capped at three percent appreciation. And they're both working full-time. I mean, I just don't, I feel like. If they have that little bit of extra income coming in, it just helps them or it's for retirement because they're not getting. They're not investing in property like so many Americans do for their retirement. So I guess I, I mean, I will defer to the housing committee if, if you guys are um, set on. Um, treating, you know, some of the units one way and, and the townhomes the other way, but.
Kelly, I hear you, but my concern is it also opens us up for a lot of abuse for lack of need. You know, if they've got another property. You know, are they just taking advantage of a?
But you're, that one's income, right?
It's our income tested too. Um, those are the units that we're gonna income test as well, the townhomes because of the grant.
I think you would still have to meet the need.
What if you had some middle ground and you just sat on anything eighty percent or below for this project, you won't?
There's only two of those. Yeah, the bulk of them are at a hundred percent, well.
I think the concept is, is to get people into ownership for the first time. It's entry level. And I think there's so much need in that category and so little inventory. That for that sector, I think it's. Yeah, it might not be perfect for some people, but they can go a level up and still do it. It's just this entry level.
Yeah, that's true.
It would be consistent with. And park, close to point.
Yeah, what's interesting there to me is if they get into one of the townhomes and they can't have it, you know, and they bought three, four, five, ten years ago. So they can afford it and then they upgrade at some point, then they've lost that asset. Part of me thinks if they can, if they can swing it. Let them, let them do it. You know, if they've got a low enough and, and then it's consistent for. Then you're not having the monitor, hey, did you sell this or not? I, I think it reduces the monitoring for, for staff for sure, which is good. I don't have a lot of heartburn with folks on another property.
And does it have any bearing that knowing that it's a lottery and they're selecting their top three units? So the, the, the two-bedroom townhome might be their third option and they get, you know. They, they don't get the first one, they don't get the second one, so they're kind of getting pigeonholed into that. And so it might, I don't know, I, I just wonder if that's, that should be added into the discussion that. Yeah, they, they own another studio somewhere, but um, and they're trying to get into a, a two or three bedroom. And this is what was.
Well, I'm, that's why we were recommending for all of the townhomes, all the townhomes. Um, and what we did with um, with say Valley Brook, um, you had a hundred and twenty days to dispose of that other property after you closed.
Question, do you think it, alright, let's walk through this real quick. So if in the townhomes we allowed ownership of other property, right? Does that create more long-term living situations where, you know. Somebody in the audience has a property, they got a studio, they buy one of these townhomes and then they rent it out long-term. So does it keep?
Guarantee they'll rent it out later term, they might short-term it.
No, we have no guarantee on that.
Maybe that's the uh, the answer is you can own another property, but. Restricted, restricted in perpetuity.
Where are you selling?
Where you selling?
I mean, I like the fact that it mimics the other deed restrictions we have. That's. For me, it's simple. Steph knows, you know, it works, we've done it.
Laura, you remind us with our existing housing stock, what has this no other ownership and what allows it?
So Gibson Heights doesn't allow you to own any other real estate. That's eighty percent AMI. Um, neighborhood, um, Valley Brook, um, you cannot own any other real estate. That was eighty to one-twenty's. Um, but back then those prices were, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are now talking about, you know, five hundred and forty thousand dollar price point. Um, Vicks, um, that was eighty to one hundred percent AMI, can't own any other property. Um, Maggie Placer also eighty to one hundred, can't own any other property. And even Blue Fifty-two, you cannot own any other property. That went up to a hundred and thirty percent AMI, but again. You know, those were several years ago and the price points weren't anywhere near what these are.
I think consistency is important, yeah.
It's consistent both ways, just so we can be clear. I mean, because Wellington and Lincoln Park, you cannot own other properties, so.
I know, but they're not townhomes. Lincoln Park has some townhomes, but Wellington doesn't.
Mention is on the deed restricted pieces, um, if you own property that's not here. Having deed restriction might not be an option.
Yeah, the, the restriction is only against um, other residential property in Summit County. So you could, you know, your parents could have um, provided you with their house. Uh, as part of some estate and it's in Georgia or something that doesn't affect your ability to buy here. It has to be developed residential in Summit County. And so um, I wanted to understand if it's okay if it's a deed restricted unit, but it's, otherwise it's not okay. I, I don't know if we want to go down that road, because then people will be, oh, I'll.
Say you just stay with what you currently have.
And it's simple. Down home, nobody else care.
That's great, it's super helpful. We're gonna be. Moving fairly quickly on getting the um, lottery application ready and. Starting to launch that process, at least for the first fifteen units um, that are gonna be phase one, so it's cool.
Before you go on, you know, a, at the open house, we, I, I talked to a lot of people that. We're just not sure of the calendar of like what the process is. And um, I've been hearing that since the open house as well and just wanted to ask that if it was possible to have. Uh, a one cheater on the website that says, you know, June of twenty-three, the lottery opens. July twenty-three, you know, be vetting deposits due on August twenty-three, break ground in September. Or whatever it is, just something that, just a simplistic calendar that uh, provides people, because the number of questions I get of going. Have I missed it yet? What's happened? The lottery's happening already? How come we need a deposit? You know, you know, it's a five hundred dollar fully refundable deposit. People don't know that, like. Just to maybe tear down some of the barriers to entry, because I think there's just, there's so much excitement. I think we saw what, two hundred people come through that day. And it, it's wonderful, but on top of the excitement is a lot of anxiety, like.
Gonna miss a day, a deadline or something and um, it's interesting because our timing has been somewhat impacted by. The housing authority obviously is going through some changes and we are meeting with them next. Um, nail down our dates, so we don't even know for sure. It's moving a little bit. We did send out a follow-up email to everybody that attended and just said, you know, we expect the lottery in late July. But go talk to our lender right now, because you're gonna need a pre-qual letter, whether that's the lender you ultimately use. Um, may not be, but you need some pre-qual. Um, may not be, but you need some prequal for that lottery. You also needed a class from the housing authorities. We tried to give them that information. In this letter that we sent out to everybody that attended, but certainly we'll get something on our website.
Yeah.
We just go back to the last, is everybody okay with that in the last? Last piece?
Yeah.
Piece, yes.
Perfect.
Can it be one of the, there are like four pages that slip by in the very front? Brooke, I think does that maybe? Um, on the very front of the.
The housing.
Website, not of the housing section, but of the Town of Breck website. The housing stuff's just so buried and it's like there's still short-term rentals on the very front page of town, which I know that's important to a lot of people, but. I would put stables up there all day long.
The town website, because we've got our town housing website, which we're doing as we're speaking and then. Um, obviously Suzanne has her site, which we're trying actually to send everybody to Suzanne's website.
And that, and it could still go there. It's just that when you look at something on the Town of Breck website, it'd be nice if there was a link right from that first page. All this information.
Um, the other thing we did want to touch base with you, I think some of you have seen that um HUD released their new AMI numbers. And um, they came out on May fifteenth and we were a little surprised by um. The numbers, especially um, the one hundred percent AMI for a four-person household. Now is a number that means a lot to us in terms of our appreciation formulas, particularly in our older neighborhoods. Which are still tied to HUD, you know, we have moved away from HUD clearly with the newer neighborhoods and appreciation is a fixed two or three percent. Um, but in a couple of those older neighborhoods, our biggest older neighborhoods. Um, the appreciation formula is still referenced as this particular HUD number. It's a four person, one hundred percent um household size, so. Um, yeah.
Or go ahead, Don.
Yeah, before we get going on this, I've got a listing that's under contract that may have some ramifications on how this goes.
We're not asking to make any decisions. So, I mean, I don't think there's any, anything that. You're not making any uh decisions. We're just updating you on where we're at and what we're working on. So I don't know if they really need to recuse themselves.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. Um, when we do come to a vote on anything, if it's, or there's a decision being made, I would recommend that you. Recuse and leave the room. So, yeah, but that's great. Thank you for disclosing that.
Yep, thanks.
Number may be accurate, it may not be accurate. We just don't know. Um, it, it impacts us really primarily on the resale calculation formula. It doesn't impact us on resale prices. Um, for units, it doesn't impact us on the Stan Miller annexation agreement, which said. Um, initial pricing based on AMI. This is really only an income um issue for the purpose of our appreciation formula. Um, the others all make sense and are relatively close to what we would expect about a six percent, even that's high. Annually, on average, it's three percent a year. So that's over the last twenty-two years. So. You know, six percent is high, but we've expected incomes have been going up, so we expect six percent or so, but twenty-eight percent just. Kind of shocked us. And so we have reached out to HUD um through a couple of different paths. Um, I've been in contact with Julie Suter and um, we have another contact through Julia. Um, that we basically asked them that this number confirm it's accurate. If it's accurate, then we'll have to figure out how to live with it. Um, but if it's not accurate, we want to know that um sooner rather than later. Because there's a lot of people sort of on pause wanting to get um sort of resale calcs. We have one closing that is like a week from now, but. As far as we know, they're still closing under the old price. Um, we have another person apparently under contract to sell. For price based on this, which could be an issue. Um, but we're telling everybody we will provide resale calcs, but there's gonna be a big disclaimer on them that we're reviewing and vetting the accuracy of this number. Um, it really comes into effect on the date they sell. What is the AMI as we've calculated it or determined it? So. We have some time, but. It, it potentially could have a big impact on the resales, particularly in Wellington and Lincoln Park.
So how long do you think it'll take to verify this number?
I think we will know if we're going to be able to have a quick vetting and verification within a week to. May, maybe ten days. If not, it could go down a rabbit hole and.
But in the meantime. We can only work with what we have.
Correct.
Meaning that if somebody is closed, the way it reads is that it sells. So when it sells, that's closing, right?
Is that right?
At, at the time that it sells.
From the time they purchased to the.
You know, that's the AMI that's in place at that time.
Yeah.
So um, you know, somebody that's selling three months from now. All we can do is say, well, here's what we know today, but we are looking to make sure that this is the, the right number. And that, and you know, we don't, can guarantee that'll be the number at that time, but I, you know, based on what we know right now, we think. That that would be it. So um, I mean, that's the plan.
What, so what's the? What's the delta of that number? If you could say for a property, there's probably not a ton of properties that are selling right now. Are we talking fifty grand?
No, there's one that's closing in a few days. Yeah, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference.
I mean, I, the, the problem is if this thing rectifies itself, this sale goes through and in the meantime. They realize they screwed up. I feel like we're gonna have to. Help the. New owner out. Then they have been paid too much by considerable portion. Guys feel about it. I think you're, we're, you know.
I want to talk to Laurie about this one that hasn't closed is getting ready to close.
And change their price.
They're gonna try to change prices though.
They haven't.
They have an obligation to tell people. I don't know.
Laurie. What? Good. Which neighborhoods have AMI in the deed restriction?
Wellington, Lincoln Park and this the point. We've totally moved away from A, AMI and anything newer. And it's those old ones that, you know, nineteen ninety-nine, we thought AMI was a good metric.
Right. Ballpark, how many units is that?
Two hundred and. Almost three hundred.
Cause if it, if it holds, I mean, we're gonna have to do housing helps for those things.
Well, the impact of this change um really is most dramatic only for folks that have owned their unit for three, four years. Um, if you've owned your unit for ten or fifteen years, actually. It doesn't really have any impact because the three percent per year is better for you over that course of that long time.
Gotcha.
So it really is limited to people that have only owned less than five years. Cause then, you know, a big twenty-eight percent increase for one year out of five of them. Impacts you, but if you've owned it a long time, like we did one today, um. And you know, it's the greater of three percent a year or AMI. And in their case, they'd owned it twenty years, fifteen years. And three percent a year was higher than the AMI. So it really is just most impactful if you just bought.
And we know legally probably can't. Mess with that deed restriction um after the fact.
Um, we have some room arguably, but I. I mean, this is one where maybe legally there's some avenue, but I would certainly not recommend it. I do look at this as more of an advocacy effort. As, I'm kind of like the policy we just adopted in the sense that. I, it's my understanding that Breckenridge is uniquely impacted by this, but we should find out whether there's others and we should be contacting. Um, we, there's a regional HUD director that I would recommend that we, we access and kind of all hands on. With Nagus as well and just see if we're, we're not alone in this um situation.
Yeah, a lot of communities do use AMI in some form. Very few communities say your appreciation formula is gonna be based on the four person, one hundred percent household. Some of them say your appreciation is gonna be based on HUD adjusted for household size, stuff like that, which, you know, live and learn. Um, you know, and getting away from HUD and AMI and for appreciation general is the way we all want to go.
Yeah.
I do think there's, and I'm, there's a lot of arguments on both sides of this, so I'm not um married to one thing or then another, but. When I was talking to the housing department earlier, we talked about would it make sense for us as the Town of Breck? To go in and buy this unit and basically buy it down and put our new deed restriction on it. Because you know, like with, in the Wellington neighborhood, you're allowed to get seven percent um for realtor fees. Whereas the new deed restriction is what, one percent?
Um, two, two percent, I think for all your sales.
Yeah.
And we've seen a lot of real estate commissions of seven percent in the last.
Yeah.
Few months.
Cause though, I mean, some people will probably opt in to the new deed restriction because it has the maintenance clause in it anyway. So it's not like it's a pure win for us because some of those people would have. But I mean, I do think, I, I think we should consider it across the board, but I think we should strongly consider it in the Wellington neighborhood where the homes are like. You know, um, twenty years old and really in need of. Maybe some upgrades or, or fixes. Um, the, the staff has so many good points and so I wouldn't. I don't think we should make this kind of a decision right now because just talking to them, they're saying like, we need to be careful not to. Outcompete the stables pricing, you know, and so there's a lot of nuance to it, but I do think in the, the older Wellington stuff. There might be some good um opportunity there for us to consider a buy down and put on the new deed restriction.
Chunk of money.
Could look at buy downs. We might also want to look at housing helps.
Yeah, we'd rather not call it buy down. Buy downs, we tend to go in there and do it while the current owner lives there. And I don't want people lining up now just looking to cash in a hundred grand.
At the town.
Keep their house because of this, you know, I think if at the time of sale. If there's a housing helps opportunity, help somebody get in there. And buy it that, basically bu, get it at a lower price through housing helps and redo the restriction. That's the way to go. Not just. Anyways.
No, I thought it would be at this point of sale.
Point of sale, yeah.
Okay.
So just an update, we'll keep you um updated as we hear back in terms of our vetting of the number. Any other questions?
Alright. Uh, committee reports, we had uh social equity and assuming you all read through that, any question? Financials.
Yeah.
But it's like, like a entry song. Hello, Dave. Attorney, mayor and council. How are we all doing?
Anytime he walks down, like. Just have a few comments on the month of April. Um, we're still running ahead of budget for excise funds, which is good. It's our tax revenue. Uh, compared to a year to go. We, year to date, we're just under a percent, roughly half a percent. So we're kind of flattened out. But more recently in the month of March, um, just looking at our. Sectors that make up our tax revenues, we're starting to see a decrease from last year, roughly two percent. Um, short-term lodging was five, but. If you recall, when we did the budget, we built a ten percent reduction in, so I don't think we'll have a risk to our budget, but we are starting to see a, a trending down. The only other comment I would have on RET, we are keeping at around twenty percent plus reduction from last year on our. RET revenue that we get. Um, looking at our income statements, there's a lot of variability from last month. So I'll hit some of the high notes. Um. We have gone through our audit since we met last month and basically. Uh, we talked about the utility fund, um, having some of. Year-end twenty twenty-two accruals that might have had incorrect information. That was true, so we adjusted that uh year-end accrual in twenty-two to match. What uh, we end up, ended up getting collected in twenty-three. Um, and then on the water treatment loan we did in September of last year, um, I didn't like how that was. How we had booked it from how things were done in the past. So we um met with the auditor and we kind of booked it like a COP for housing. So that's gonna impact revenue in twenty twenty-two and um the expense in twenty twenty-three. So we'll be doing a budget appropriation in July to reflect the changes based upon the utility fund. Um, we're fine, it's just timing is what I would say. And then looking down to um. Accommodation unit compliance, basically you'll see that we're almost seven million favorable to budget. That's not true. Um, basically, uh, I. Talked to the auditor about looking, as you know, we bill those fees at the end of the year, we collect them. A little bit in the following year, but it's, that's really what I'll call unearned revenue for us. So. We move that to the balance sheet, if you will, and we in twenty-two. And then we recognize that in January and twenty-three because that's what the fees are for. And so when you look at that, that's why all of a sudden we have a seven million dollar revenue number. So um, what that means is at the end of the year is where we have the budget. For if the accommodation unit compliance in twenty-three, we won't recognize that because that'll be for twenty-four. And we'll put it to the balance sheet at that time. So we're gonna look at the phasing of some of these things. So it will make more sense and you won't look and see, wow, I'm sixteen million ahead of revenue in our budget. We're not. Um, I would say in looking at things, a three to five million is probably a safe bet is what I would say on revenue year to date.
Hey Dave, on that short-term rental, um, I understand what you're doing, putting it on the balance sheet. Is that okay with Tabor? Have we looked at Tabor?
Yeah, yeah, everything's fine. We went through everything. So we're okay doing it that way. It was. Um, recommended by our auditor that that would be something that we should do as well. So I think, I feel good about that. Um, no other really items to note other than um meeting with Shannon and James this week to look at our capital projects. We're running way under to the budget, could be phasing, but we're gonna do a kind of a test point to see where we are. Um, and see what I can take. So, there you go. Any, any questions?
This is a great document, yeah.
When we added the budget, there was a request last month for the.
Yeah.
Keep track of all the different versions, so you have that at the end of the packet.
You so much, this is fantastic. Uh, you're happy with the auditor? They, yeah.
Exactly. Uh, probably for the first time since I've been around, actually. He feels it's very important that he give a brief overview of the audit process to the full council and we'll be doing it at the next work session. But it's ten to fifteen minutes.
I think it's great though, especially after that article I, everybody. Yeah, I sent an art, there's a town, I think it was in California where.
Illinois.
In Illinois, where the finance director was stealing. She built herself a suite, stable and a whole bunch of stuff and nobody caught on.
Fifty-four million.
Yeah, like fifty million. She's in jail now, but one of the things that came out of it though was that having, having a strong mayor. Form a government for a small town doesn't work very well.
Yeah.
And it's good to have a manager that runs, runs the town. And this was checked by audit too. They had an independent auditor that did not find the money until.
That's crazy.
It roads that they couldn't fix and it's the craziest, craziest audit.
That was a unbelievable audit.
Unbelievable.
So.
Playing here.
That's all I'll say. Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thanks. All right, uh, town attorney update, town attorney.
I have nothing tonight.
Ooh, what's that? Uh.
Anything in there.
Right, HR staffing analysis and update. And analysis update. Hello.
Hi, good afternoon, mayor and council. In your packet I included um the quarterly update of where we are with people and turnover. Vacancy rate. Um, you'll see we're, we're trending down um quarter by quarter, but. Um, you'll see in a later paragraph that Q quarter two usually. Spikes a little bit just because people move out of the area in the months in, in quarter two. Just because they don't want to do, they're done with the winter, things change, housing ends, things like that. Um, the turnover by department, you can see like, for example. In community development, that the five point nine is only one person. It was one planner, so it looks high, but. It's all relative to the number of employees in the department. Uh, total turnover seventeen point four four. Um, and then if you have any questions on separation reason. And then if you have any questions on separation reason, let me know. Application volume, we are getting more applications that are coming in. I would say this time last year, it seemed a little bit more dire, a little bit more desperate. And I feel like uh, individuals are now sort of settling into employment and um, we are getting applications. So it's partly because our starting wages are attractive, our benefit packages are attractive. We do have housing that we can offer and I do believe that the market is changing a little bit. I don't want to speak too soon because it could change just like it did overnight previously, but I feel a little bit better about it this year. Um, this time I also included some um, specifics on our transit and heavy equipment operator positions. Um, just so you can get an idea that we do get applicants, however, um, there are reasons why they aren't selected. Uh, we do hire the best of the best and um, public works has indicated that while we do have the applicants. Um, for various reasons, those positions are harder to fill. And I am here if you have any questions.
A great report too.
I love.
Things look better too.
I loved that you brought a bunch of five um, full-time or part-time year-round, promoted into full-time. That, that was really great. It's a good move for the town.
Yeah.
I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up because we're really proud of that. It, it means that we have individuals in the pipeline that are ready to go. For a lot of positions.
Match them up.
Yep. Great, thank you. Oh, done.
Yeah, it's, it's good work. I'd love to see that, that twelve, thirteen percent vacancy kind of just hopefully get down a little bit. I, I know you share that sentiment as well, so good luck in the next quarter and thanks for the update.
All right, we're going to take a soft five.
Well, fire, the fire guys.
And our weapons with the chief. He's polishing his nunchucks. All right, we are back in session with. What are we talking about here? Update on countywide wildfire mitigation efforts. Take it away, chief.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Sorry, I'll stand up so everyone can see me. My name is Cliff Cross for the record, planner for town of Breckenridge. We're just going to do some brief introductions. So today we have Cat Gray fuels planner from the Forest Service Dillon Rangers District. Captain Matt Deneck from the wildfire division for red and blue. Chief Baird from the town of Breckenridge Police Department. You have Zara Hickman from town of Breckenridge, open space and trails. We have Dan Schroeder, who is our CSU extension for Summit County.
Good job. Yes.
Took me a while to remember all of those titles. So quickly, I'll just give you a short synopsis of what. That has done, sorry, community development has done specifically here in town, and then we'll have some updates from some of our key stakeholders. So specifically for town of Breckenridge, we've worked hand in hand with a lot of these partners over the past year. Some quick data for you. We have been able to process about 110 permits or sorry, 110 defensible space. Lots just around Breckenridge. This includes private property, open space as well as private open space. Some of the key indicators would be the HOA of the Highlands. They did a major defensible space project with. I think around 60 different properties in Highlands, basically finds one through five, I believe. They then came back and actually did a very similar project on their private open space along Highway nine. You've probably seen the work that they're doing coming in and out of town currently. And then definitely we've had a few projects here in town with some of these players as well as Zara from the open space. So definitely staff has tried to work as much as possible to kind of help defend our beautiful area. And kind of protect against wildfires. So at this point I can kind of pass it off. Does anyone particularly want to go first?
I can go first since I handed out those maps as well. Yeah, again, Cat Gray from the Dillon Ranger District and the district fuels planner. So I'm happy to answer questions about any specific projects from last year or ones planned this year, but. The long and short of it is in 2022 for forest health and fuels projects. We treated roughly 1,200 acres of national forest, and that does include a little bit of. Town and county land for some of our cross boundary treatments. Maybe no, not from 2022, 2023, we have cross boundary treatments. Specifically, the Peabody Placer up on the Golden Horseshoe and. The just and possibly Blue River East that we're planning out this summer. So yeah, this year is. Townland, sorry. Wellington was power burned cross boundary last year. So almost 700 acres planned for this year. And if you look at these maps I handed out, I think they tell a nice story. The one has the treatments from last year and this year on it and the other. In the gray polygon show all the fuels and forest health treatments since 2006 that we've done. And then in the pink there is some of our planning efforts for future treatments. So. Yeah, we've been doing a lot of great work. I think that the Dillon Ranger District is ahead of the curve from talking to my coworkers on other forests. They're now trying to catch up, whereas we've been doing this work for over. Yeah, 15, 20 years now with a lot of partnership funding and working relationships. So. Just want to keep that momentum going, continue the good work so that. As we get fires on the district, we get four acre or four foot flame lengths and not 200 foot flame lengths. So thank you for the support that the town has offered, and we hope to continue it into the future.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a question. When. The different entities that do wildfire mitigation, defenseful space and whatnot. Do they have the same prescription? Like in other words, will the with the Forest Service do the same type of. You know, same degree of cutting dead trees, live trees, whatever. As would the town if the town contracts people is it all is it all is pretty much the science the same for all of it?
He, yes, and the state Forest Service, they're the entity that. Is the professional expertise for the county and private boundaries, and I work closely with state foresters as well. In some of our treatments because sometimes they're cross boundary contracts that they're able to do. So yeah, the the state Forest Service and the Forest Service are pretty lockstep with. The civil culture and the science behind our treatments.
Say we will just pick a one that I know about up on up on across from Wellington, you know, by. By McLaren's and and now the percentage of the the trees. Are they all pine beetle generally what you guys do or cutting? Is it kind of dead pine beetle trees? And or is it just kind of clear cutting even even live trees just to make a fire break?
Yeah, we're clear cutting the dead and live for the most part, and a quick ecological explanation of that is that. Our lodge pole forest, which we have primarily here are even age stands. They're used to a big forest fire coming every 200 years and replacing it. So. If you go in and just thin them out because their roots are pretty shallow. Once they lose their buddies against the wind, they typically you'll just get blow down and almost a bigger mess than you started with. So it's not for economic reasons or anything like that that we clear cut. It's that we're trying to mimic those high intensity fires. Yeah.
Sort of the area Jeffrey's talking about along that. Upper sort of cut line, those trees are all. Orangey brown now like looks like that whole front row is dying. Is that pretty typical?
Right next to the piles that burned?
Uh, yeah, it's on that side of the road, you know, that everybody bikes up.
So there is, there was a little bit of heat put on some of the.
Oh, so that's what it is.
Not killing the trees.
Okay.
It yellowed. It's the middle of winter, right? So it doesn't yellow anything. It kind of cooks them and then they turn red and then they'll fall off and then you'll those the trees will get more green.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes there is mortality related to the pine or to pile burning.
Okay.
There's no question that is a known, a known thing. One of the things you'll see up in that Wellington cut is there was a an idea, a try to thin a little bit. Lodge pull as Kat said is almost impossible to thin, right? Especially when you have a large amount of mortality in it, which we did up there. But we tried a little bit and before we burned the piles, we actually used it as a training site for about a summer and a half. For the firefighters of all the agencies to go up and basically cutting trees that had been blown down. Many of them landed in the piles. Wow, it's convenient. But you know, it's a known thing, right? So on federal land, we get. The script, the script is the script oftentimes on state land and state managed land, which is some of your open space. We have. You know, that same script to work with. There are times where we get to try different stuff. And try feathered edges even on the the white cloud.
Yeah.
Which was all on federal land. We did try a feathered edge in that a lot of it blew down.
Yeah, I did have a crew out there for probably at least a week, just piling all the. Individual trees along that feathered edge that fell.
What is it? I'm sorry, what's fed that in?
We just, we left the live trees within 100 feet of people's backyards just for aesthetics. Yeah.
Kind of bend it, give it a little bit more of a an aesthetic. Side because I mean, let's face it, not everybody likes a clear cut in their backyard.
Yeah.
But the reality is lodge pool doesn't respond very well to it. So it oftentimes creates a lot more work when we do it knowing it. It's one thing.
Right.
But we discourage. A lot of thinning projects and when we try them, we usually try them with a very calculated hand.
And you know, part of the the and perhaps a misnomer of when we're doing these things, and I guess it's a matter of what's worse. A wildfire or a sediment runoff have have on some of the larger projects, have you noticed that? The the sediment runoff is reasonable on on these kind of newly changed lands.
On on lodge pool treated forests like we're doing.
Yeah.
Which we can talk about lodge pool because that's most of what we're doing.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Will you pull the mic closer?
Oh, sorry. When when we look at lodge pole clear cuts treatments, whether they're done by hand or done by machine, the sediment is very minimal. You're leaving the. The ground cover, right? You're leaving it all intact. You're not ripping the roots out. The roots are there. The new forest is there. I mean, drive, walk around on the Wellington or the Wellington, both Wellington and the the white cloud treatment. I mean, the new forest coming up through is actually going to be pretty awesome this year. It had a lot of rain last year and arguably. We had a lot of rain last year, right?
Yeah.
And very little if no sediment. Collection, I guess, right? So we didn't have erosion related to forest treatments.
Yeah.
And we're pretty careful. These guys.
Yeah, we do have forest standards of leaving a certain amount of we we've measured in tons per acre of, you know, sticks and small logs. For soil nutrient recycling and sedimentation. Yes.
Yeah. What do you guys do on Indiana Gulch? Are you doing? I know you kind of improved the road. Is that a done? Is that done now?
No, that's continuing. So they finished one out of the three units out there. So this summer. Will be the the last two and the other they're hauling up to Boreas Pass and then out Boreas Pass Road.
Right.
Yeah, and that's honestly more of a timber treatment.
Yeah.
So it's not one of mine, but that's what I know.
Oh, it isn't yours?
I'm not like the contract rep on it.
I almost called you guys.
I mean.
I'll, I'll leave you alone after this, but I almost called you guys. You know that gate kind of across from the the shooting range? That's not not Forest Service gate. That was closed and locked yesterday.
At Fry Gulch?
No, at Indiana Gulch.
Oh, the shooting range out there.
Yeah, and and I talked to the Forest Service before. I believe that gate is supposed to be left open. It's not you guys.
Yeah, we've had, that's been an ongoing issue. Yes, thank you.
I call, I think I left a message.
Okay. It is a private gate.
Brownells.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Feeling with that.
You know where I got that from.
Mitigation from the fire department point of view. So last year was wet, right? Everybody remember all the rain. It really hasn't stopped yet. It snowed all winter and it's continuing to rain. So. Motivation was less than. To to have us come out, but even though it rained all year, we still did about 100 property assessments. Many of which in town of Breck and town of Blue River. So that was awesome. People are still paying attention. We love that. But at this point, we are looking at mitigation from two different points of view, and then really this has been forced upon us. We're looking at it from. Pro saving property, but also saving their insurance policies and the insurance industry really at this point is the primary. Primary driver, I guess. So we have gone back to the table this winter and between Summit Fires, Wildland Division and myself. We developed new defensible space forms, I guess, computer based forms that. Are reflecting a lot of the insurance companies concerns because the last thing we want to do. Is give the homeowner some information, but then have it contradicted from their insurance companies. Fortunately, we are seeing insurance companies being relatively consistent on what they're asking homeowners to do. It is following firewise guidelines. This is where you guys come in. Because eventually it's going to pressure code changes. The new firewise guidelines are slightly different than what the town of Breck has right now. Similar concept. Concepts really aren't that different at all, but the verbiage and the way they describe it are very different. So. This is happening on the homeowner level, and that's one issue, right? The bigger issue that we're seeing is anything valued over 25 million. And you can imagine in the town of Breck, especially now. There's a lot of 25 plus million dollar buildings in town, especially in the commercial core. So insurance is going way up and coverage is changing, to say the least. So we're working with them. We're trying to come up with. We've been meeting with insurance companies. We've been meeting with reps. We've been trying to figure out how to basically market risk. And from a fire department's point of view, this is a little bit of an interesting realm to get into because it's not one we're typically involved in, but. It's falling square on our on our shoulders and and we're embracing it and we're working with those owners to try. And minimize the droppage of insurance and it's working. The first few we've seen. Insurance companies are taking our forms and our recommendations and this new plan. And moving forward, but we think it's really important that you guys understand that this is here and it is going to. Community and it already is. So there's a lot of people scrambling for insurance right now. On that commercial side, that $25 million range, there seems to still be a market in the homeowner range. But as it was, I, as it was suggested to us, as we come across and figure out ways to help these. These owners market their risk. It was suggested that we do need to play a role in this and find solutions and and be part of that solution. Both to keep them insured and to also. Attract more business into the area because you attract more insurance companies. The competition remains. So anyways, that's what's going on. I'm. I'm glad to answer questions, but I'll tell you straight up, this is relatively new and I don't have a whole lot of definitive data. We have some. But not a ton. This is new.
Questions for Matt?
Last year we talked about getting with the town of Breck and just making sure that we sort of. Were in step with you guys. I was just wondering if that happened and.
Cliff has been a dream to work with.
Oh, good.
That's what we think.
Yeah. Love that.
Honestly.
We say that every day.
You know, it's, we have processed a ton more permits. Me and I've received a lot less complaints. So it tells me that people are feeling that the town is more approachable. Which is great from my point of view. That means they're actually doing the work. And Cliff and I talk relatively often and open spaces. Leave Zara out, but we talk all the time too. So that's good.
How does the process work for fire restrictions in the summertime? Is that that's the sheriff, right?
Sheriff in the fire districts. Ultimately, it is the sheriff. Yes.
But you guys work together.
We meet, meet or talk once a week. That talk will start probably in the next couple of weeks. Smokey is coming out of hibernation this week. He's going to low, no surprise there. So no fire restrictions yet. But we'll see how June plays. June is typically windy and very dry. We certainly haven't seen that weather shift yet. But you know, that's, that is typically what you're.
The sheriff makes the announcement, but you guys are consulted all along.
It it's all the attempt. The intent is that everyone moves forward as one entity in Summit County. That's the intent.
Speaking about moving in sync, you mentioned that the firewise programs are while conceptual, the same that some of the details are a little inconsistent. Is, can you expand on that? And is there something that we can do on our end to help you be, you know, where things are consistent across the?
So Firewise, a handful of years ago. Changed from zone one, zone two, zone three, zone one being up to 30 feet from the house, zone. Two going out to 100 feet. And zone three, basically till the end of your property that that would that had been the standard for a long time. The current town of Breck code is based on that. Those numbers. I believe there's numbers in there out to 15 feet and then 15 to 30, but it. The general concept was using those general numbers. Firewise, as a result of what they're watching happen nationally, and you got to remember now we have a little bit better data because we have ring cameras on houses that are burning down. So. There's video proof of how homes are burning down, right? This is. The Marshall fire put out so much data. Because you've boulders in affluent community burned down 1,200 homes. There was a lot of ring camera data. And I say it's ring camera. There's a whole bunch of them out there, but you get the idea. So. There's a lot of video proof on how homes burn down. The state has done an incredible job documenting that. Firewise recognized that the first five feet was absolutely critical. So now this new zone one is now the immediate zone, and that's zero to five feet. And inside that zero to five feet, it's pretty much no combustibles. They that is the one. It's minimal combustibles. The town and and really the county and the state Forest Service who drove the previous code. Talked about the first 15 feet. So this is not a wholesale change. This is really just dialing it down to that five feet and understanding that that first five feet is absolute critical. So did not put landscape features in there, minimal combustibles, that kind of stuff. From there it goes out to an intermediate zone. Intermediate zone is from five feet to 30 feet and in there we start to look at, you know, minimal trees. The really the same approach that we looked at before, but more of a feathered away from the structure. And then the zone three, which is now the extended zone is basically 30 to 200 feet. So this is the area where space out your trees. Let's keep the fire out of the treetops. So as it approaches the house. It gets lower and lower, lower and lower intensity, and ultimately doesn't actually impact the siding of the house. That's, that's how it's supposed to work. There's really no intent in the Western landscape to keep fire out of the landscape. We can't do that. We've tried. It's it's not possible. So. The idea is to keep the fire intensity at check and let it move around structures in the urban interface. So that's really the intent. Hence, the five feet is really, we just don't want anything burning inside of five feet.
Thank you.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah, that's good.
Quite simple. From a code point of view, it really just, there's some adjustments.
Yeah.
Yeah. Quick thanks on the work on the insurance. I've definitely seen some transactions throughout the county where these big buildings don't have insurance and. They're, you know, they're reaching out all across the country to try and get policies and it's a struggle. So thank you for the hard work there and taking the initiative.
Yeah.
Aspens are still preferable to.
Aspen are great, especially during the bulk of the fire season. It's when Aspen goes into dormancy when they actually burn quite well. Typically, that's in the fall. And even the Tarmigan fire, which was a couple of years ago, burned through a good chunk of Aspen. Urban interface is relatively easy to manage, especially when it's part of your landscaping. When it's out in the woods, it burns really well because it creates a lot of dead down. That's not typically what people let happen next to their houses. So hence the reason we love Aspen in the urban interface as landscaping.
Very good.
Yeah.
Other questions for Matt? Okay, who's next?
Sure you change your batteries in your smoke detectors.
Yes.
When you get home.
Sorry.
That's because he's HO2.
So you've heard a little bit from our fire and our forest service partners about what they're doing towards mitigation. And ideally their efforts make it so that a large scale evacuation isn't necessary in the town of Breckenridge. But we do know that fire and weather are unpredictable, and so we do have to prepare for that piece of it as well. The evacuation generally falls on the shoulders of law enforcement because they're busy fighting the hot stuff and kind of rescuing people that are in that situation. So. I gave you a little bit of an update on a couple of documents. The county is updating their evacuation annex to the emergency operations plan. That is ongoing. It's a, it's a process and I anticipate by the end of the summer, they will have finalized the evacuation annex for Summit County. We are the only town in the county, I'm told, that has a separate evacuation plan. On top of that, I do believe there's value in the town of Breckenridge having their own plan. But there it's also crucial that those two documents are in alignment just because there. The likelihood of a town only wildfire evacuation is incredibly remote, if not non-existent. So. So we are updating those documents. I anticipate I will have the towns done by the end of the summer as well. However, I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention, kind of what I see as the. The two biggest areas, kind of the low hanging fruit where we can move the needle safety wise. On evacuations in the town of Breckenridge. One is we have a substantial group of people that are in town during our tourist season that don't have vehicle. So we have to get those people out of town. So. Basically, what that would ultimately look like is we would be directing them to a bus stop and then both the free ride and the stage and maybe the resort. Would just be on constant loops to get people out of town. So that's one component that we can do ahead of time messaging, and I'll be working with Bella in order to get some messaging specific to the rental units. So that these people can be guided should something like that occur. Also baked into the county's evacuation plan is the idea that. Time permitting, if we are starting to do an evacuation or we see an event somewhere close to us and we're going to start getting people out of town. We're gonna, we're gonna get the tourists out first ideally, and then everybody else can, you know, kind of be on hold while we're evaluating the situation. But the, one of the things that I think we can do to make it safer for our guests and. And ultimately, if the guests get out of town quickly, safer for the people that live here, is some better signage in the event that we do have an event. So what I am proposing, I do have an ask, you'll see it's about $200,000. This is in order to purchase a few items that will help us to funnel people out of town more efficiently. Should we have a large scale event? $165,000 towards some VMS trailers and signs that we could ideally, time permitting, pre-stage. These are VMS, these VMS trailers we can control remotely. So. If the red, white and blue crew or the incident command says, hey, the weather's shifting. Now there's a new area in danger. We can. Change those signs remotely without having to send somebody out to each and everyone. Also, and the idea would be is that because our location is is just unique, it's a valley. We really know that if something happens in order to get everybody out of town, they have to make it down to the bottom of the valley. And so. Once they get down to the bottom, we can either send them north, south, or ideally we can send them east as well during, you know, several months of the year. And so to have the ability to just kind of funnel everybody that way with signage. Addition to that, we would have, we're just kind of earmarking about $20,000 to have fabricated signs for some of those other areas that are at the base of the valley that maybe not a high traffic area, though. Just to avoid confusion. Every time somebody turns around, it's twice the, you know, twice the traffic that we see. So. And then in addition to that, some cones, one of the things that we would want to have the ability to do is to turn around traffic. Particularly on Highway nine, the southbound lanes to potentially use one of those to go northbound as well. And we know that if the situation were to become dire enough, traffic is going to do that on its own anyway. And so we just wanted to try and make it so that it's as safe as possible. So that's what that ask is for. I included in there a little bit of information about the hazard mitigation plan for the county. We're about halfway through the cycle for that. It gets updated every five years. I did not include it because it's a 716 page document. And I don't think Helen would have appreciated that. However, you'll see on this document that two of the things that are discussed, number five is to update and enhance the evacuation plan. The last time the town's plan. Was updated was before we had some of the technology that we have now to reach out and touch people via their cell phones. So. That's one significant change. And then number seven is what I am proposing to use this money to move the needle on. And then number seven is what I am proposing to use this money to move the needle on. So. Chair, uh, but happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chief.
The big difference between the current VMS signs that we have that are saying construction. Um, and the ones that you're proposing, is it really being able, is it the number of them? Or is it being able to do it from an office or offsite or a, a command center somewhere?
The change that's driving this ask is the number. Absolutely. It would take a lot of these. And actually Rick whittled me down quite a bit from my initial. But the, uh, the ones that we would be purchasing, uh, would would have the ability to control remotely. The ones that are owned by the rest of town, if we were to have an event, I anticipate those could be needed for other types of messaging as well. We do have one existing with the police department right now, but it's a hands on. It's it's older. So we, you have to be hands on.
Also, the ones that you would be buying primarily for evacuation. Your hope is you never use them.
Right.
And they could be used for other events or other notifications. They wouldn't have to be, we own them. It's not a grant. We can use them however we want to use them. If we need them for construction, if we need, as long as we can access them. Should it, you know, an emergency arise, but certainly in the winter too. If it's an event and we need to move people or do stuff, we have access to more.
They'd be moved like, like say for, for a evacuation, they'd be put in place. And then they'd be taken away when they're not, when it's not.
Yeah, because they're gonna be a little bit of a, you know, they're gonna, there's. Pathic hazard, but they're not necessarily off, you know, the road. So your hope is that you have some advanced warning that we see something. You deploy them, right? Hope you never need them, but at least they're there for that twenty-four hours or something like that if something changes.
Yep.
And how many, what, what's the quantity? Like, how many of those EMS signs does a hundred and sixty-five grand get you?
Ten. Yeah. And so the, these would be, you know, in a large scale event, obviously something like this. It might be, it's, it's probably more likely that part of the town would need to be evacuated and not another part. So. But worst case scenario, we have to move everybody out of town for something that's rapidly evolving. Ten allows me to place them in key locations so that everybody coming down from either side into the valley. Would have the right information they would need to get out safely.
James, do we have storage for these signs? Uh, where they're accessible and like would be inside and not get rusted out or anything?
You probably want them outside because they are solar. We'd wanna, we'd wanna have. We'd wanna have a sheet where they're, we're testing them, you know, so, you know, they don't sit there for two years and then you need them and nothing's working. So.
Uh, address a little bit of that too. The ones that we are purchasing have the ability to nest a little bit. So they won't take up, they're, they're not the size of the ones you see C dot using. They're nowhere near that size.
Do you need, uh? Thumbs up from us?
I think we want to put it as part of, we'd like to go ahead and get it ordered and we will do it as part of our appropriation for this year. So.
Ask if anybody wants people to die or.
Looking at a two to four week turnaround. So we should have them before the, you know, the first fire, potential fire season.
Okay. Thank you, Chiefs. Everybody, no, nobody wants to see people die, I don't think.
I am gonna leave town with the forest because they need, they need, they need to be entertained.
You could be like Modus. Anybody else Cliff?
Chipping, uh, program.
You gotta be at the mic for the, for the Zoom people, for the Zoomers.
Kick it off, right? And we asked about chipping, but if I could start, it has to do with synchronicity and communication. So Wildfire Council is a body of eleven voting agencies. And that's the towns. We have some citizen reps, state forest service, federal. Anyway, um, yeah, I'm Dan, CSU extension and synchronicity. We all work actively to speak the same language. So the way Kat and Matt were, um, presenting, we try not to confuse anyone. So the whole point is the public gets the same message. And I'm wild for prevention primarily. As, as are the team until something else occurs. And so chipping program is one of the items. Um, Captain Benedict had mentioned fire science, clear the first five feet. Um, fire can kind of middle mill around neighborhoods and those little sticks are a way for the people to participate through action. So is it about to happen? I think was your question. June fifth, we hit the ground and it's two months, eight weeks. And we've got polygons throughout the upper blue. And yes.
Uh, website where people can get information and just cliff notes how it, how it works for just a regular mom, pop, home homeowner. That they want to clear some of their property.
For the record, so Summit County's website, Summit County CO, CO stands for Colorado. Summit County CO dot gov slash chipping, straightforward. And the, the main thing is it is taxpayer supported, so it's free. Limb up your trees, cut some trees down, whatever it is you intend to do on your property, put a curbside. There it is. Put a curbside right now. Um, so it's growing. We do go down every street one time. So when it comes to your service week, have it out on Monday. We might come by on Monday. We might come by on Thursday, but you're ready. If you put it out behind us, we're not coming back. That kind of thing. Breckenridge, by the way, has had anywhere from, well, we're about to have our tenth annual. Um, two hundred and fifty to four hundred independent parcels per year participating. There's a lot of P's, but I, that's really great. And then over, over the whole course of the county. Over the stretch of the county, over the course of the last nine years, we have removed just shy of fifty thousand cubic yards. Of material from the county's backyards. And, uh, you know, a little research, six hundred pounds per cubic yard. Anybody's quick on the math. It's something like a twenty-two million pounds. Of wood has gone to beneficial use.
So people go to the website, they look at to see where their week is or where the, what week or what weeks is their location. And then they put it out, you go from Monday to Friday, they put it out as, so probably the, the week previous, a couple of weeks prior. Get it out there and then, then you'll pick it up.
Hopefully Public Works is all right with all this. We, uh, advertise, don't touch the asphalt, don't bury drainages and that kind of thing. And then on my side of things, at the end of the season, I need to make sure it's all out of the way, taken care of. Thank you, town for providing, if you did or didn't know, it's Stilson Lot is where we, where we're putting chips. It's our landing mid-program. And this year it'll go to the scrap incorporated into the compost program. Yeah. So all these years, nine years past, it's been beneficial use has been part of the, uh, program. If I could just conclude with synchronicity, the way we all talk the same way, it, um, Captain Benedict has said we like to use verbal judo. And, uh, Chief may do the same, try to get people moving. And, uh, and then I just think that's great. There are two priority goals with these programs. And one is that the, uh, well, the information stays on people's minds of this issue. And that is we're bombarded with information. We've got a mind filter and, uh, it's my job, I think, just to keep it up there, keep people aware of the. Of the fact that we live in a fire prone environment. And then the other priority is to get them to do something. And so the evaluation loop is we set out the, the, uh, education and we know it was internalized because chipping program, back to your original question. They acted on it. We can see that because there's material curbside. And we've been tracking and, you know, how many, almost eight thousand independent properties have participated over the decade? I'd say the majority of the year rounders know that wildfire is one of our top priority issues. And they're actively participating. And hopefully they'll do their thing when it comes time to evacuate if that occurs.
Cool. Thanks. Awesome.
Uh, one more point is, um, yeah, we've been having wetter summers. Uh, we've been keeping this good work going for a long time. Many people remember twenty eighteen Buffalo Fire, how scary that was. Um, but the public memory is short. So as we continue to do this work during this wet time, you may start hearing from your constituents. A little bit of pushback about all our clear cuts and why we're doing this and that. Um, but we're playing the long game. Uh, we don't want to end up like Grand County in years to come. So just remind you all to keep toeing the line of what we're trying to achieve here long term. With, uh, educating or talking to the public.
Thank you for that. Any questions for anyone? All right. Thanks for the hard work.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Cliff. Nice work. Okay, Stilson subdivision, town project hearing.
So they're using where the snow storage is? Is that what he's saying?
Staples housing is now a chipping program. Hello.
You're not giving away one of their tracks for.
Yeah, we just, we just gave them all away. Sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tonight we'll have the public hearing for this town project subdivision of Stilson Patch Placer. Um, any questions? I'm happy to take questions from the staff report.
On the, I'm just curious, on the alley, private alley, stables, um, will town be responsible for plowing that or that'll be the HOA?
No, that'll be the HOA. Responsible for the loop road that's public though.
Okay.
Might be easier to see.
All right. So we're assuming with that alley. That'll sort of work like Wellington where they have one contractor that plows all their private stuff and maybe it'll be the same.
The same as.
On tractor as Wellington and Lincoln or.
Where Gibson Heights has something somewhere where the town plows the road, locals lane. But the locals lane alley where all the, um, townhomes are, that's up to the HOA.
Right.
To plow that along with the driveways.
I have never been a fan of building stuff like this, even with the Wellington, because it saddles. An HOA for a, um. Affordability project that we're building with additional HOA dues. So I don't know why we keep doing this kind of.
Well, isn't, they're not gonna have their own HOA, right?
Well, they will have their own HOA. Um, I don't want to speak to how that is going to occur because I'm not. The development, um, contract side or how the HOA documents will be set up. I don't know if anyone from housing is still here, but, um, this subdivision is according to the master plan, which showed the alley.
Well, we keep, we, uh, same thing that we did in the Wellington, we build in expense for. For the HOAs. I mean.
Over twenty years remained extremely affordable HOA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To this day. I was surprised that is we're considering that a public road around the edge, though I didn't realize that the public road.
Yeah, if, if you have questions for clarification, um, you know, maybe Shannon or James can help with that issue. Um, but in terms of the dialogue, probably should have that tonight at the actual public hearing.
Anything else? All right. Truckie, Truckie told me to quit asking questions.
You'll grill me tonight.
For subdivision, also ten project hearing.
All right. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, we have the Soul Center subdivision, which is really. Just the opportunity to carve out the. The southern piece of the existing tract for the Soul Center development. It's, um, essentially exactly what was presented at the town project hearing last July. For the, the FERC's new building there. Um, we did include the previously approved site plan that shows the. Um, property line because we knew that would be a concern with, with the council, with some of the previous discussions about. Um, non-geometric shapes, um, right angle, uh, property lines. But we did amend the, the subdivision code last fall to, uh, make allowances when that was previously anticipated. Through a site planner, a master plan. Uh, we did provide a special finding based on the recommendation of the, the planning commission. To, to that effect that it does comply with, um, section nine. Dash two dash four dash five, the lot dimension section of the subdivision code. So that's really the only thing that's noteworthy about the subdivision, but I'd be happy to take any questions ahead of the, the project hearing tonight.
Thanks, Chris. Anything? Truckie says, don't ask any questions. Awesome. He's tough.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, that concludes the, uh, regular portion of the meeting. You want to do, uh?
Yeah, I think we're gonna do a report.
Manager and staff report.
So. And I hope nobody feels pressured to do this, but Christie Heights is asking again if anybody wants to go to their annual HOA meeting on July second. They always have one around fourth of July. That's a Sunday at three P M. We struggled to get, I mean, everybody's busy then, right? You know, family stuff, I get it. So. I don't have a problem telling them we don't have anybody available unless somebody really wants to do it.
Anybody want to do it, Todd?
Um, but last year they acknowledged that, like, they recognize, they're like, hey. For any other HOA and.
That's.
The answer is no. So they recognize how unique that is. And I don't think that's necessarily a precedent we need to continue.
Yeah. It's just a tough time of year.
So we're using and, uh, as of today, now we're using your new town emails. Okay?
Yeah, what's the deal with that?
That's the only way.
Like if I want to write Eric, I have to use, I don't have a town email.
You do now.
Have to use it. It's just there.
Now, can they see my, my, um, internet history?
Jeffrey, we will be sending all our communication to that email address. So.
I'm not gonna get any of my regular email anymore?
It's the kerfuffle.
It wasn't controversial at the retreat and now I realize it's because you weren't there.
I'll figure it out. So how do I get it?
It's, yeah, you're, you have to set it up. You need to have Chris set it up. Just go into.
Yeah, okay. All right. I didn't, I didn't follow that one. I'll get, I'll get on it.
CML is looking for people that are interested in serving on their executive board of directors. They have, uh, three positions that will be open for communities under. Less than eight thousand in population. So they're served by, um, small kind of medium and larger communities. And so for ours, there's three positions open. They, sometimes they don't get a whole lot of interest and, uh. I don't know if anybody has it. You have to be, have a letter of support from the board.
Uh, there's no resolution requirement, but just an endorsement.
An endorsement.
And an application.
So it's either an elected or it could be, uh, elected or appointed position. So does anybody think on here, Kirsten has expressed some interest in, in running if, uh. But not if a council person.
And doesn't Kirsten, you already serve on.
On the policy committee.
So you're intimately familiar. I would gladly nominate you if you're interested.
I, yep, all in favor, I.
All right, I, I'll write you an email of endorsement.
Email address.
Actually flipped it and I, I think that one of you ought to consider it. And then I said to Rick, if, if you all, I know you all serve on so many boards. That I would be happy to. We should. Yeah, so.
Never hurts.
What, to Kelly's question, what's the commitment?
Meeting.
I will find out more about that if you, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be more. I can. I can get you the information about the meetings and the time commitment and let us know. I don't think we need to bring it back if someone expresses interest and we just need to have someone sign off on an endorsement, so I'll send out more information.
Anything else, Rick? Uh, okay, we didn't have cast or MMC.
Well, the, we're not gonna have a housing committee anymore, if you remember that conversation, so we will have a kind of our housing meeting that we do and so we gotta figure out, I don't know how you want to determine who that council person will be. Um, I mean, I can talk to both Dick and Todd and see.
Who wants to stay on and be the person?
Like it.
We can work it out if you guys are okay or?
Yeah, you want to say or just have a, work it out with them?
Yeah.
All right.
Good with me. Everybody else? No caster MMC, have an open space. What do you got?
Okay, so.
Handouts from Jeffrey.
Refer to your handouts, please. Okay, so uh, the Keystone Drill, uh, BHA has kind of got hold of this Keystone Drill, it was used, oh, many Keystone Drills were used all around Breckenridge, eh, you know, during the mining era. And you can see there's an old one and, you know, the original one and the new one that they just got, that's been in uh, it's been in Como for all these years and they, and now it was, they put it from Como to, the country boys had it for a couple of years. Yeah, it was originally in, in Breckenridge. So um, anyway, they, they used a bunch of them and then they kind of rolled them around and they drilled down to find out where they should put the dredge boat. BHA got a hold of one and they're looking for a place to, to, to put it. It's like, it's like sixteen feet by twelve feet, you know, something like that and they'd put like a little, little thing on it over the top just so it doesn't, you know, it doesn't get wet. Um, Bosak, uh, Bosak, you know, the first op, thought was, put it by the, the new um, handicap trail, a wheelchair accessible trail, but there really isn't parking, it's just too much programming there. Um, the BNB, the BNB parking lot is huge, so what, what Bosak kind of thought is, is, you know, have it on the, the west side of the parking lot, not in the parking lot, but maybe like a fifty, sixty foot trail that's designated by, you know, rocks and sh, and stuff and uh, you know, so it's not a, it's not kind of a elaborate type thing. But just kind of to go to this uh, to this drill that you'll, that you see. And it's not, the early one has this big ass, uh, a big um, boom, but that's not gonna be on there. It's only gonna be, I think, twelve feet high.
Oh, you didn't get one?
I ended up with two.
Oh, yeah, well, cause that's the importance. So uh, anyway, so there it is, Bosak kind of thinks that'd be a cool spot. We don't envision it being like the troll at all. I mean, not, it's not, it's not like there's gonna be. No, I know, but like, no one's, no one's gonna have their picture taken in front of this. In, in the deal is part of the significant, it was used up and down French Creek. So um, you know, it's, it's, it's historically significant in the location, so. Um, they just want me to run it by you. I know we're all sensitive about eh, heavy programming in French, uh, French culture area. But I don't think this is um, I don't think this is gonna be a big deal and I think it'll be kind of neat. I think it'll be kind of, and there is, the snow storage is on the, on the east side, so people could, even in the winter, could kind of ski to it or hike to it. Um, and it'll, it'll be very, very low uh, low impact as far as how the trail's built.
Any questions for Jeffrey?
I, I don't know if, I'm, I'm trying to picture wandering back in that area, but you know, it might be another opportunity to do another accessible trail. I mean, I think we need to see, seize those opportunities whenever we can.
I think that was the intention with this.
Jeffrey, what the terrain's like?
Uh, with it being, like, isn't that a big place for?
Yeah.
It's kind of hide and hang out?
Yeah, I, you know.
Hands all the time whenever I go up.
Right, and I, you know, I think.
And what if Breckenridge history has found that if there is active interpretation, a sign, usually that in itself deters vandalism.
For not being in the parking lot.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be off the plaque left.
Many years until you know exactly where those places are, Jack.
Certainly been a less of an impact now that Dick's kids graduated. Yeah, that, that would be a, uh, that would be an idea as far as maybe, you could do like a boardwalk or something like that, but is, is, Bo- Bosak's gonna, in, in history, gonna kind of look into that. We just wanted to let you guys know. Other than that, we had an open house last night and that's why I was asking all these uh, questions about the, the fire people, cause it was just a lot of people asked me questions that obviously came from a place of that they didn't know what they're talking about, about how we're doing wildfire mitigation and just wanted to, you know, kind of clear up it. Um, it was kind of interesting, but also pretty well attended. We have pizza and uh, people for the most part were really excited about what open space has been doing and, and a diverse user group. We had, you know, kind of some older floppy hat types and, and, you know, young buck mountain bikers and yeah, it was a good thing. Staff did a great job and uh, yeah, yeah, so. That's, yeah.
Awesome. Who is it?
Uh, nobody, no thing since I last reported.
History.
We have not had a meeting.
State of Arts.
No meeting.
Events.
No meeting.
Childcare.
Nope.
Wow. Workforce housing committees disbanded, disbanded. Social equity.
It was in the packet.
Uh, other matters?
Can I ask a question about social equity? Did you guys put that, I saw there was a volunteer request in there and I was just wondering if we put that out to the county, cause I know we were a little bit slow to looping the county and tell that information, but.
I don't know if we sent the volunteer sign up to the county. Um, we were supposed to be talking with Dave Rossi, but I don't know if that happens, I'll find out.
Okay, thanks.
Quick other matter.
Other matter.
June second, heading over to Bayle to kind of see what they've got going on with their kind of last mile delivery. Um, I think I'm going over with Jesse and then I think on the ninth, Dick's going with Matt, so anybody wants to attend, hit us up. Should be five thirty departure. Tough sales pitch there, gonna be there at six thirty, cause they get going early.
Beautiful time of day.
Other matters?
Hi, we're good.
Um, you know, just, you know, from the open house for the stables to see, and I know I talked about it earlier, but just to see the pure amount of people lined up, eh, you know, and continuing to stream in for the entire event, um, kind of really showed the need for uh, this project and, and also master planning for, you know, the, the next project. And I just think that it's just such an important thing that you, 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 you talk to people in community and how this is gonna change so many people's lives where they're getting out of a place they've outgrown and that place gets freed up for the people that have been renting and just have thrown up their hands, seeing that they'll never own a place uh, and where they want to live. And I just wanted to, you know, reiterate that the need is there and it is palatable, like, it's, they're, they're knocking down the doors, so. That's all I had.
Town cleanup day went great, thank you, Public Works, everyone.
Yeah.
Do we ever keep track of trash or people that attend or, do we do that? Yeah, just curious.
Yeah, and, and we did invite, you know, avoid a riot, not uh, having a meatless barbecue like, like uh, somebody wanted. You know, after picking up poop for three hours, we're gonna give them a hay burger.
For everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Yeah.
I do have one. Um, I was wondering if we could look at our parks in town and see if there's a way to get permanent water fountains there because as we're moving away from water bottle, single-use water bottles, I think that we really, like Bear Park, there's a restroom, but it doesn't have a water station. There's no water fountain at all at Bear Park and um, it'd be great.
Man?
It's the one down by Alpine Bank and local liquor. Um, Popsicle doesn't have water. The, I mean, the River Walk doesn't have water except for downstairs in the visitor center. So I just think as part of our rebranding effort, it would be awesome to really make that a priority.
Do we want to, I, I, I'm in full support, but do we want to try to come up with a rec water? Kind of something where we, you know, a, a recognizable, recognizable signage so that you, oh, there's water, you know?
Yeah.
Water for the wind, it looks like oil.
Oil.
Oil for the wind? Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, but the parks are such a natural place to start.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, Jeffrey?
Yeah, do you guys see that the, the um, God rail that was knocked down on Wellington?
Oh, yeah. Police have spoken to the man.
Oh, really?
Was it you?
No. I'm on a E bike.
He's, he's looking.
Yeah, so, did, did, was that a, did we, was that an accident? Did, was when I was gone, I guess.
Um, I have one thing. Um, during the town cleanup, um, and I, I did talk to the inspector about this, I there's a lot of trash that comes out of building sites. And I really think we should ask staff to be more vigilant about. I, I think citing them, so like today I was on Chantilly, the middle Chantilly Trail. Maybe the, the moon or the sun or the sun. Um, and all of the um, hay retaining stuff is all down. All their fences are down, you know, I know we pay attention, I don't even know, maybe that's not even.
County.
That's county, so maybe it doesn't matter, but just by example, I feel like we paid a lot of attention at the start and then these things wind on for a while and trash near every building site, whether it is just things like um, candy bar wrappers and, you know, bottles from the dudes having lunch or whatever, really think we need to step it up as a town and start citing, start citing builders for not having clean sites.
Supposed to throw anything away in those open dumpsters of, you know?
But they do.
This is the worst time of year. Cause a lot of stuff like just has melted out.
Yeah.
That was blown away.
Even summer, it's blowing, I, that's.
Well, I think they had, should get on that, so. That's what I got. Anything else? We are adjourned until seven o'clock. I'm gonna call to order the Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, regular session of the Breckenridge Town Council. It is seven PM. Roll call, please.
Kelly Owens.
Here.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Jeffrey Bergeron. Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Backerman.
President.
Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Eric Mamula.
Yes, I am. Uh, approval of the minutes for May ninth, twenty twenty-three, anybody have any issues? Minutes stand as presented. Agenda, Rick?
No changes.
All right, uh, we move on to the first bit and that is the Pride Month procul- proclamation. Which I'm gonna read. Pride Month proclamation, whereas the town of Breckenridge is committed to promoting diversity, equality and inclusion and recognizes the importance of celebrating the unique identities of all individuals within our community. And whereas, June is nationally recognized as LGBTQ plus Pride Month, an annual celebration of the contributions made by the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer LGBTQ plus community and to recognize the history of discrimination and oppression and honor the ongoing struggle for equal rights. And whereas, the town of Breckenridge recognizes these struggles and contributions of the LGBTQ plus individuals in our community, state and nation. And reaffirms our commitment to creating a safe and welcoming environment for all residents, visitors and businesses. And whereas, the town of Breckenridge supports the LGBTQ plus community encourages all individuals to celebrate Pride Month with respect, acceptance and love, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and town council, the town of Breckenridge officially recognizes June twenty twenty-three as LGBTQ plus Pride Month and encourages all residents, visitors and businesses to participate in events, initiatives and educational opportunities that honor LGBTQ plus Pride Month and the LGBTQ plus community. Thank you. All right, we move on to public comment. These are non-agenda items only and we have a three-minute time limit. Is anybody here that'd like to speak this evening? Sir, please up to the mic, uh, just state your name for the record and take, take your three minutes.
Hi, um, Mr. Mayor, town officials. Um, thank you very much for um, inviting the public in, uh, and I would like to say also, um, I'm glad I'm not in Florida. You know, the things that we do here and maybe even take for granted here um, are, are so very important and we could see it by comparison elsewhere and it's a darn shame. Um, but that's not what I'm here to speak about, I just want to commend you. So I'm Alan Brooks and I'm the owner of seventy-six Cucumber Creek Road here in Breckenridge. Uh, my primary residence is in Denver. Um, and uh, the facts seem to be that sales and sale price of residential homes in Breck is down substantially from past years. I believe that um, certainly this is gonna have an impact on town revenues. Um, and I think that your recent policy in short-term, short-term rentals has certainly hurt home sales by shrinking the pool of potential buyers. And I asked to what end? Um, what has been accomplished by tightening this policy and I'm not talking about the fees that you're charging per bedroom. Uh, actually, I support uh, the need uh, to build more affordable housing. Um, I'm, I'm, uh, I won't say I'm happy to pay the extra fees, but I don't have a problem at all with that. Um, and um, and by, by the way, in the spirit of transparency, is there a way, you know, that we can see what, what's being done with those fees? Uh, obviously there's buildings that are going on down at the airport. Uh, we can make some assumptions, but is there a place, you know, on the website or whatever that we could see where the fees are going to, um, who owns those homes, you know, how many people are taking advantage of that? Uh, just so we could feel better with the fact that we are uh, cooperating and participating in this. Um, but uh, again, uh, it, it's, it's not the fees, but it's the regulation where we are not allowed to transfer our license should we sell the home. Um, that's where I take exception to, and I think many other people will as well. Um, and I don't know what that's doing um, uh, for the town of Breckenridge. Uh, as being a, a short-term landlord, I, I spent a lot of time up here, you know, probably uh, three quarters of, of the nights of the year, you know, my wife and I and my family were enjoying it and we love Breckenridge, have for great many years. Um, but we are able to afford what we're able to do through a business model where we can rent out nights. And we rent to um, high-value folks, if you will. Uh, uh, it's a very substantial rental fee based on the season. But we're bringing in people who are spending good money in town, good money on the slopes, in the shops, in the restaurants, uh, using the services. Um, so the town benefits by this, plus obviously you're getting taxes as well from that. Um, and so, um, you know, I, I, I take exception to the fact that if there's, if, if I owned a hotel, I could sell that and, and sell the license. As part of the business, why am I being restricted by the town and selling something that's valuable to me? And what it does, again, my earlier point, it, it severely limits the number of people who could then buy in, in the town because you're restricting the pool of people who could afford the homes. Um, I don't know the, the total number, I believe there's approximately seven thousand homes in Breckenridge and the majority, about four thousand from what I could tell, uh, have some sort of, of rental options available to them. So that's the majority of, of homeowners in Breckenridge. Um, I don't know how many people who own homes like myself live outside of Denver, but I, I, I would suspect that it's a probably a sizable number of people. I don't know that we're being fairly represented. We're paying very good taxes, we, we enjoy the services, we enjoy the town. We certainly take advantage of that, but I don't believe we're represented in our interests of uh, being homeowners where. of uh, being homeowners where we are short term rental business owners.
Need to wrap it up in about thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. And and really, all on my my final statement is I just asked that you reconsider your restriction on allowing short term rental licenses to be passed along in the sale. You participate in that. There there's transfer fees. There's all sorts of goodness that comes to the town in that. And I would encourage you just to reconsider, and I do thank you for your time and uh, thank you for consideration.
Alan, thank you. Um, you can find out what we're doing with housing from our website. There's a whole housing page. Um, the financials can show you where the fees that we collect go into the housing fund. And I could answer your question, but it would take a long time. We had multiple public meetings over this. We took about a year to get.
And I came to many of those.
Yeah, we took about a year, and I would be happy to meet with you for coffee and go over our reasoning um, at some point. And uh, you can reach me at Eric at townofbreckenridge.com, and then we can set something up and have a coffee, and I can I can debate you over uh, the 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 merits of what we did, and whether you agree or not is up to you.
I appreciate that very much.
Thanks, Alan.
And go Nuggets, right?
Yeah. Anyone else this evening? All right, with that, we move on to uh, Breck Tourism Office Update. Lucy Kay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, little outlook, positive outlook in these gloomy gray smoky days. Um, looking at Destination Analytics, which is the national research company that we quote frequently here. Um, while fifty seven percent of travelers are believe that our recession is around the corner, they also feel very confident personally, financially, and travel intent has never been higher. It's higher now than it was even pre pandemic, um, because of some of the travel costs and things like that, timing, and where and how people may travel, um, is uh, perhaps, you know, being altered a bit, but the intent is there. So that's really good news. The other piece of good news on the macro level is that um, uh, the federal government has finally lifted the vaccination requirements for inbound international travel. That was on May eleventh. So we should start seeing the international inbound loosen up quite a bit. We're actually hosting our first um, international uh, media person this month for, um, you know, we haven't done that in quite a while. So anyway, so good news on the macro level, bringing it a little closer in. Um, Western uh, resort lodging is soft, um, like ours is, no surprise. Um, we have been forecasting that with outbound international travel opening up. People are getting back to a little more of their normal travel patterns. What we don't know yet is how like is the softness a normal kind of thing? Are we okay? As of May fifteenth, we are tracking very comparably to the way we did in twenty one. We're down from twenty two, but close to twenty one. So we're kind of okay with that. Um, we have, uh, we've got some things going on with key data, so I'm not going to get into the granular numbers yet, because there's a few things in play. But as um, at our last board meeting, we decided to go ahead and go to Plan B. And our, you know, we have this tiered marketing plan, so we're doing Plan B. We're going with a little deeper in the funnel, which means that our messaging, rather than being totally aspirational, is a little bit more sales oriented. It's not too much. It's not like buy one, get one, anything like that, but just a little more book now kind of um, information. So we're going to track that and see if it makes a difference, and we can move it back to where it was, or we can go deeper in the funnel if we need to. So it's a little bit conservative, um, and we don't really think we need to do it, but we want to err on the side of being conservative instead of leaving what's essentially a perishable good on the shelf. So any questions about that or concerns about that direction? Yeah, okay, cool. Um, couple of other updates. Our English, Spanish language classes um, have been going fantastic. We've got sixty signed up for the next round, and some of the graduates from the first round of classes are now recording some of our Be Like Breckenridge tips in Spanish for us. So it's really cool. They're they're really into it. We're getting a lot of good feedback. And Flore, who's our part time um, employee, is helping us with engagement with a lot of this work. Um, Breck one O one, which is our orientation for frontline employees, um, just started last week. Uh, thirteen businesses are involved, which is comping their services, just so people learn about um, the different things available in Breckenridge. Um, we have ninety students that have started, and we have two hundred that have applied, so we can go up to two hundred on this one. Um, what I wanted to call out on this is we do a trivia night as part of this that I think maybe you know about. And we did one, I think, two or three weeks ago, and it sold out. It was a hundred people at Broken Compass, and it's really intended for education, you know, just tips about Breckenridge. But in your planning meeting, you all talked a lot about the need for connection and new people. How do you integrate into the community? And I think the fact that we have such a strong turnout for this in the middle of May really speaks to that. So I think these kind of programs really check a few boxes, and because of that, I think we're going to look at blowing that kind of thing out a little bit more, maybe doing a little bit more um, thinking about it beyond just the educational piece, you know? So that's a good piece of news. Um, Pride Event, uh, uh, thank you for the proclamation. Um, our ten mile Pride Event is June ninth and tenth. This is a community event, not a B T O event. We feel like everybody's leaning into work on this one. Um, website just went live. We've got five hundred views already. And I just wanted to share one thing. We have it in our press release, but for those of you that are too young to remember nineteen ninety two, which is everybody except Jeffrey and me. Um, in nineteen nineteen ninety two, the Colorado State um, passed Amendment Two, which effectively um, banned um, anti discrimination laws um, from being passed by municipalities. So that amendment was passed, the Breckenridge Town Council immediately um, and unanimously expressed its opposition to any form or type of discrimination, and hereby affirms its commitment to support the fair and equal treatment of all individuals. So it is just absolutely heartwarming to see how far it's come and where we stand today. So I think this community really should be commended. So that's, I I think I'll just leave it with that. If uh, we have a annual meeting um, right here, June fifteenth. And we have clean audit, so. Questions?
Yeah, just thank you for all the work on the Pride Event. I know the Social Equity Commission has really enjoyed being able to work with you, so. It's Majae has really been doing the heavy lifting on that one, but thank you. I'll pass that along. Yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucy. All right, we'll move on to continued business, and we start with uh, Council Bill number seventeen. Series twenty twenty three, this is an ordinance approving a development agreement between town and Father Dyer United Methodist Church. This is a second reading. Mark Truckey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The ordinance in front of you, the development agreement will allow for the operation of a food pantry trailer in the parking lot at Father Dyer Church, while construction occurs in addition to the west end of the church. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, questions for staff? Anyone? All right. With that, anybody in the public wish to comment on the second reading of Council Bill number seventeen? No, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion, Jeffrey?
Uh, second reading. I move we pass Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty twenty three. The title has been read into the record.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
It's a fake. You're perched.
Who's going? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Forgot what we were doing.
Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we also have a second reading of Council Bill number eighteen, series twenty twenty three. This is an ordinance authorizing the granting of utility easement to certain High Point property owners and utility providers. James Phelps.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Town Council. It has stated this ordinance before you this evening for approval will provide access for a wire and sewer um, uh, service across town property. And as part of our town charter, it is required. Um, any grant of easement is conducted through the through this town council.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Question? For staff. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, we will be pass Council Bill number eighteen, series twenty twenty three, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have some first readings this evening. The first is Council Bill number seven, uh, nineteen, series twenty twenty three. This is a bill for an ordinance mending the general offenses to prohibit carrying concealed firearms in town buildings.
Mayor, Council, um, there are two bills that are um, connected, and if it's okay with you, Mayor, I'll speak to both.
Yes, please.
Vote on them separately. Um, the first is a substantive change to the general offenses to prohibit concealed carrying of firearms in um, certain enumerated uh, public buildings. Um, in the last session, a state legislative session, locals were given a a room to regulate in this area, and there are a number of jurisdictions, municipalities that have um, done this similar ban in concealed carry and open uh, in public buildings. The second bill is um, existing code that we simply cleaned up to make sure that the list of buildings where the prohibitions um, apply uniformly. That um, existing code is the ban on open carrying of firearms. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions? All right, anyone in the public wish to comment on uh, this first reading of Council Bill nineteen? Huh? No? No, nothing. Uh, and with that, motion.
Are we doing comments?
We'll do our comments after when we do discussion.
Okay.
Uh, motion.
I move that we pass Council Bill. Now, can I make the motion even though I'm going to vote against it?
Yeah.
Sure, okay. I move on first reading and move past Council Bill number nineteen, series twenty twenty three, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion, Dick?
Yeah, I I mean, I appreciated um, Jay's questions and Chief's answers and comments, and uh, you know, my view of this is, I I do think it could be, I I think it's useful and responsible for us um, to pass this ordinance for our buildings are are publicly owned and taxpayer owned and and publicly owned facilities and, you know, i- is it hard to enforce? Sure, it's hard to enforce. A lot of the laws we ask R P D to enforce are hard to enforce. Um, is it going to make us safer? I personally believe that it it could. You know, it could prevent crimes of passion, you know, where um, the the person didn't intend to commit a crime when they walked in with a concealed weapon. However, uh, and they're law abiding people, so if we prohibit them, they wouldn't have brought their their weapon in. Um, and got into a situation where um, you know, it was a spur of the moment type thing, and and a gaining firearm was used. I think those things happen. And I think this can make our community safer, so I I will be voting for it for that reason.
Other discussion?
Yeah, you know, I think we we understand that the essence of this ordinance is to do good, right? Like, and everyone, especially after we hear about mass shootings day in, day out, to a point where we've become numb to them. And to pass something that had limits, something when it comes to firearms feels good. It feels like we're making a step to prevent, you know, a mass shooting happening in in our facilities. But I think the reality of it is different. I think that um, you know, that 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 desire to just feel like we we can do something is offset in this case in the fact that it is not enforceable. I don't think it does nothing to improve um, to improve our safety or that um, it removes guns from anyone other than criminal, you know, other than law abiding citizens. And I think that that's where I have a hard time is that this comes across to me as bad government, because it is that token legislation that maybe, you know, we feel better by passing it, but it does nothing.
See, I I disagree with your premise. This is not about mass shootings. This is not about any of this. This, the impetus to this was somebody dropped a gun at a hockey game. Nothing happened, but if that gun had gone off and killed somebody, that's not blaming anybody but an accident. And if we had this in place, that gun would have been in the dummy ass's trunk instead of on the floor of the of the stands at the where spectators are. So I don't think, I I do not view this at any point as if we're going to stop any mass shootings, or even I maybe a crime of passion, but I don't even see it in that realm. I see it with taking a step to protect the people that come into our facilities to enjoy things like hockey or, you know, with the rec center where firearms are not necessary, and that's how I see it. So I did, for me, it's not a feel good. I think this is a good thing. I mean, I I wish I I wish I could do this at my own restaurant. I had a woman leave a handgun on a pinball machine one time in an arcade filled with kids. And if I could tell everybody they're not allowed to bring a weapon into my place, I would love to do that, but, you know, so I I think this is a good thing for for that for that reason. And I think that the the differences that the staff made with things like Blue River Plaza make a lot of sense, so that's why I'm voting for it. Anyone else, Jeffrey?
Um, I'm with Jay on this, and I I just think it's, I just think it's difficult to enforce. I think that, you know, I the the chief doesn't really, it doesn't have a warm and fuzzy feeling about it. I mean, I honestly, if if I thought if I was the swing vote on this, if there was, if I if it was three to three, and I had to vote one way or the other, I'd probably vote in in favor of it, you know, it's just just because I'd rather have it pass than not pass if if it was just up to me. But in this case, I kind of feel that I have to kind of vote as in on principle. Um, because I just don't think it's going to do any good. I think it can put the staff in an awkward situation. And if someone, I mean, I'm a concealed carry, I have a concealed carry license, and not that I'm, I I use it that often. But if someone is following the rules and had taken the class and had, you know, and is a responsible gun owner, I don't know if if this is uh, is if those are the people we're looking to uh, direct this towards. So, yeah, I, you know, this, for me, this is more of a gesture, uh, you know, than than than, you know, than actually a hard feeling on it. But I I don't, I don't think this is a good, a good, good law, a good, uh, I don't think it's a a fu- a functional um, law.
Anyone else? No, you missed your window. But you cannot, well, you cannot.
I mean, it's hard to not comment after hearing your discussions.
Um, I'll I'll give you a minute.
Thank you. I won't even need a minute.
What, why should somebody, first of all, I'd like to understand the distinction between and why you would make a decision between open carry and hidden and and concealed carry? Because there's there's a, there's an open, there's a uh, there's a difference in the law between open carry and concealed carry. So you, in other words, you you have to make that decision. Correct. Okay. Why should anybody be carrying a gun one way or the other into a public place? Why should you, why should somebody come into a public place, a restaurant, where there are children or where there are adults, doesn't matter, with a pistol? For what purpose? We have to put a stop to this. And you know what? Maybe it doesn't have as much teeth as you possibly want. Fix that later. Make a statement right now. Stand for it. Would you uh, state your name again?
Alan Burkestein, seventy six Cucumber Road, Creek Road. A uh, a a proud uh, resident now of Colorado. I'm I'm a recent transplant from Massachusetts. And you guys in Colorado do a lot of great things, and in Breckenridge, you do a lot of great things.
We're in Massachusetts.
Um, twenty miles, uh, well, actually, you'll appreciate this, maybe in the spirit of this, uh, one town south of Concord. Frank Sudbury, Massachusetts.
Yeah, yeah, I'm from Brockton.
Oh, great, okay.
All right.
He got kicked out of Brockton, though.
Okay, with that, any other discussion by council? Roll call, please.
Well, just so you know, for uh, Council Bill number nineteen first.
Yes, nineteen first. Yes, nineteen first, and then we'll do twenty.
Councilmember Beckerman.
No.
Member Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
No.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, the second half of this is Council Bill number twenty, series twenty twenty-three. It's a bill for an ordinance updating the town buildings in areas where open carrying of firearms is prohibited. Like our town attorney said, this is just some cleanup language to support what we just passed on first reading. So are there any questions for staff on this piece? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this one? With that, is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill number twenty, series twenty twenty-three. The title which has been read into the record.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have the first reading, Council Bill number twenty-one. This is series twenty twenty-three. An ordinance amending the Breckenridge Municipal Code to adopt by reference the National Electrical Code twenty twenty-three edition, Rick and Company at all.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rick Fouts, CBO of the Building Department. I'm here with Billy Levens, our electrical inspector, and we're here for the first reading of the adoption of the twenty twenty-three National Electrical Code, also known as the twenty-three NEC. This is state-required adoption. We are attempting to achieve this adoption and have the new electrical code go into effect with fairly consistent timing to the state, plus very consistent timing with our neighboring building departments. Does anybody have any questions for Billy and I?
Thank you, Rick. Questions? No? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? Is this quicker than new, normal, Rick? Don't we normally pass stuff when it's like a couple of years prior?
Yes.
With that, is there a motion?
I don't think you'll find it shocking that I make the motion that we pass Council Bill number twenty-one on first reading, series twenty twenty-three. The title which has been read into the record. Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by council? Roll call.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have one resolution. This is resolution number ten, series twenty twenty-three. Thanks, Rick. Resolution of the mayor declaring that the COVID-nineteen emergency has passed. In connection there with all prior actions or orders adopted by the town council and/or the town manager are expired or otherwise rescinded.
Mayor, Council, as you have heard tonight, the federal government has rescinded or sunset the emergency as well as the state did. The feds did it May eleventh, and the state of Colorado did it earlier, May fifth. Most of those emergency orders were put in place because there was a lot of funding coming in, and we didn't want to miss the opportunity on funding. But now that those actions have been taken at the federal and state level, we think it's appropriate to do here in Breckenridge. And I think some of the orders that were issued by the manager have been rescinded already, but this will make sure that all of them are. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a maskless resolution, number ten, series twenty twenty-three. A resolution of the mayor declaring that the COVID-nineteen emergency has passed. In connection therewith, all prior actions or orders adopted by the town council and/or town manager are expired and otherwise rescinded.
Second. Is motion in a second. Any further discussion? God, what a long straight trip that's been. I just want to thank you all for all the hard work. Those of you that were here from the beginning until the end of this today. It was unbelievable, and the amount of time that you all put in was exceptional. And I know there's a lot of people in town that are very thankful for what, what we collectively did, including our wonderful staff. But people are already starting to forget, so I'm glad it's behind us. But thank you for everything. And with that, roll call.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade. Councilmember Beckerman. Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have a motion to cancel the second meeting of June because many of us will be at the Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference. Anything to add to that, Rick?
No, I just, I feel like this is really important conference for us in light of what we're seeing in the legislature. And I've been getting in there and being part of that network and understanding, you know, what's going to happen. So we've never had a problem with this coinciding, but this year there, it's at the first part of the week as opposed to the latter part. And so we're suggesting that we go ahead and cancel the June twenty-seventh meeting. There's a motion in your packet.
Any questions for Rick? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this one? Is the staff okay with this? We're getting thumbs up from the staff. That's a good sign. Motion.
Yes, I move to cancel the regularly scheduled town council meeting June twenty-seventh due to a conflict of the Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Planning Commission decisions. We have any thoughts on a call up for the sixteenth of May? No, with that, planning commission decisions are approved as presented. We have a subdivision town project for the Stillson Stables Village. Tonight is the project and public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sarah Crump, Planner Three for the town. Before you tonight, for the town project hearing, is the proposed Stillson subdivision, which will subdivide Stillson Patch Placer into eight tracks labeled A through H pursuant to the Stables Village workforce housing development. Um, Stables Bill, Stables Village will be placed within tracks A through E. Track F is to remain for governmental uses, and then tracks G and H are designated as open space. This subdivision allows for the previously approved Stillson master plan and is compliant with all the subdivision standards of the Land Use and Development Code Title Nine, Chapter Two. Staff recommend and the Planning Commission has voted to recommend approval of the proposed subdivision as presented, and I'm here to take any questions I, you might have. Thanks.
Thanks, Sarah. Questions for staff about this subdivision? No? Anyone in the public wish to comment on the subdivision of the Stables property this evening? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Soul Center subdivision.
Nope. You're one ahead. This is the Stables.
Oh, oh, shoot. I make a motion to approve Stillson subdivision, creating track A dash eight town project hearing, PL twenty twenty-three dash one zero one three five with the attached findings and conditions.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? No, roll call, please.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have the Soul Center subdivision town project hearing. Chris?
All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Gulick, Planning Manager, for the record. We have a proposal to replat track D three, a replat of tracks A one, C one, and Lot One in the McCain subdivision to create a point eight one five acre parcel for the Soul Center in the three point seven seven four remnant parcel that will be retained by the town for future nonprofit and social service development. The subdivision is twenty-four rapid drive. We did include a comprehensive staff report. It was similar to what was presented last week to the Planning Commission. We note that all subdivision code provisions are met with this application, notably section nine dash two dash four dash five. Even though there are some irregularly shaped parcels proposed with this application, they are allowed under this section of the code due to the previously approved site plan and master plans that they're, they comply with. The Planning Commission did recommend an additional finding, number eight, that explains why the irregularly shaped parcels comply with that section of the code. Other than that, we're passing along the Plan Commission's recommendation for your consideration of approval tonight of the subdivision.
Chris, any questions for staff? Public wish to comment on this public hearing for the Soul Center subdivision? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Soul Center subdivision town project hearing, PL twenty twenty-three dash zero one two zero with the attached findings and conditions.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion from council?
The additional finding number eight with the Lot Line. So thanks, Chris.
And with that, roll call, please.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Sade.
Yes.
Count, Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Anything else for the good of the order this evening? We are adjourned.